Welcome to the City of Half Moon Bay's Planning Commission Meeting of Tuesday, September 10, 2024. At this point, I'll hand the mic over to Bridgette, who will talk about the video protocol.
Thank you. Okay, so welcome, everyone, to the September 10 Planning Commission Meeting. Just a few protocols before we get started. We are broadcasting this live on Pacific Coast TV's website as well as Channel 27. We also are providing Spanish interpretation for those who need it. Public comment etiquette. We will open the meeting up shortly with general public comments, so anything that's not on tonight's agenda can be spoken at that time. Those items that are listed on the agenda, we will have designated public comment time at that time. Planning Commission allows three minutes of time given to those who are commenting. We'll start with those in person and then go to those that are on Zoom. We also have kind of a special case this evening where we have some on video, so we'll accommodate that as well. If you're online currently, please, if you're wanting to speak, raise your hand. There's a raise hand icon. And if you're on the telephone, please push *6 to raise and unraise and *9 to mute and unmute. We did have a little bit of correspondence this afternoon, and we have prepared a memo, and it's posted on this evening's agenda on the website, as well as been provided to the Planning Commission, so everyone has that. And I will now turn it back over to Chair Gossett to officially begin this night, tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Bridgette. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. So can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, this evening, we do not have Commissioner Ruddock or Vice Chair Johannes, so we will start with Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Commissioner Goran.
Here.
And Chair Gossett.
Here.
Just make note, we have a quorum this evening.
I'd like to open up the public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. And I have a card from Dave Shore.
And before you start my timer, Scott, there's some slides to go with this. And if I just kind of wave at you for next slide, would that work? Or do you want to hand me the clicker, however it works? That's not mine. Okay.
It's flopped.
I've got it on USB. There we go. Thank you. Okay, so good evening, folks. About the Hyatt Hotel project, this is the final EIR about the Hyatt Hotel and Town Home project. All the Post-it notes you see represent many places where the EIR is deficient, cherry-picking data, misinterpreting LCP provisions and Coastal Commission guidance, non-responses to public comment, and making things up out of thin air. Overall, the EIR is heavily slanted in favor of the applicant. But despite all that, they couldn't explain away the bulk and size of the hotel buildings, and the EIR identifies multiple sections of the LCP where the project, as proposed, presents significant and unavoidable impacts to visual resources. The following six slides, Scott, next, please.
Possible?
Down arrow or F5? As he gets that going, the following six slides detail the many LCP provisions and city regulations where this project is not in compliance and therefore cannot be approved as proposed. I'm going to pause until that happens.
Yeah, just one moment while they sort out the technical difficulties.
For people following at home, we're seeing reversed images on our screens up here, so it's a little hard to see the slides that were prepared.
That's... Can you go to the next? Thank you. You skipped one. There. If you can slowly roll through the six of those and then stop, I would appreciate it. Thank you. These six slides detail the many LCP provisions and city regulations where the project is not in compliance and therefore cannot be approved as proposed. Please note the use of language of shall, require, and will. This is unambiguous language, and it cannot be ignored. At issue is the protection of designated visual and scenic resources, which are critical and intrinsic to the image and character of this town. You can... Next, please. Note the highlights. Keep going. Keep going. These are entered into the record. One more, please. Stop there. Thank you. I would like to remind the Planning Commission that two years ago, they denied a different project that came before them. The written conditions for denial of that project specifically cited Coastal Commission Act Section 30251, Local Land Use Policy 9.1 regarding scenic and visual resource areas, Policy 9.2 regarding scenic resource protection, Policy 9-12 regarding Town Boulevard Scenic Corridor. On all of these points, it was impacted visual resources that was the basis for citing these sections of code in denial of the project. Here's the project in question. Next slide, please. What you're looking at is a 5 by 12-foot Caltrans message sign on the side of the road. That's the full size of it. To be used only in emergency situations, which wouldn't even be lit up 99% of the time. Lenny Roberts of Committee for Greenfield Foothills spoke in support of visual resources and local town character being the basis for denial of this project. Verbatim statements from other Planning Commissioner members at the meeting stated, "12-foot is big. It's the first thing you see coming into Half Moon Bay. I don't think it fits here." Does this fit the character of the area? Not at all. It does not conform with the LCP. Also, California Coastal Commission submitted written letter objecting to the placement of the sign regarding its impact on visual resources and coastal community character, an important phrase. They highlighted the importance of preserving visual resources and scenic views from Highway 1, consistent with visual resource protection policies of the Coastal Act and our local LCP. This project denial is clear precedent based on impacts to visual resources to be applied to the Hyatt. And if a 5 by 12-foot highway sign is denied on the basis of impacted visual resources, I ask what is the comparable impact of a complex of hotel and townhomes 34 feet high and 500 feet long along the highway? To show the actual visual impact of the Hyatt if built as proposed, the following slide shows the view from northbound Highway 1, unretouched, unretouched and undistorted, as compared with the cherry-picked viewpoints presented in the EIR. This is the true visual impact of the proposed hotel project, before and after. Next slide and final, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Does anyone else wish to speak out on anything that is not on our agenda? If not, I'll close that public comment. And we will move on to Project 1A, the Coastal Development Permit and Architectural Review for a New Single Family Residence, PDP 17-055, and the location is 2800 Champs-Élysées Boulevard. And Scott, I think I'll turn it over to you for the presentation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Scott Phillips, and I work in community development, project planner for 2800 Champs-Élysées. And before I start, just a reminder to the Commission, you're encouraged to disclose any ex parte communication before we start, so if there has been any, this would be a good time to mention that.
Thank you, Scott. I did speak to Brad Steinwick briefly about protocol for the meeting tonight.
Okay, so this site, as mentioned, is at 2800 Champs-Élysées. This is the vacant lot that's the most western lot in the Stalaski Gonzales Planned Unit Development. And so what really drives the development standards for this particular PUD is the Stalaski Gonzales specific plan, which allows for single-family residential uses. Now, the site slopes gradually with sort of the high point along the cul-de-sac, sort of the western side of the cul-de-sac, the southern Champs-Élysées cul-de-sac, which is 36 feet above sea level. Now, the Pullman Water Course runs along the northern boundary of the property, so the sort of the northern parallel green line on the aerial photograph here indicates roughly where the Pullman Water Course is. Now, let's see, the project includes the construction of a two-story residence that would total 4,710 square feet, and that number includes the two-car garage that's attached to the main house with a breezeway. And the house contains four bedrooms and bathrooms on the lower level, with the primary living space on the second story, so it's more of a reverse floor plan, if you will, with the kitchen on the second floor. Covered deck extends along the western side of the second story, and a detailed landscape plan was included with the proposal. Permits requested include a coastal development permit and architectural review. And this project has been reviewed by the Planning Commission on several occasions, starting back in August of 2018, again in April of 2019, and in May of 2020, and then most recently in July of 2023. At each of these Planning Commission meetings, the Commission continued to a date uncertain and requested additional items. Most recently, the July 11, 2023 meeting, Planning Commission discussion centered around drainage, mostly in potential flooding related to the proposed project. And then the Commission also discussed or expressed concerns about some policy compliance with our local coastal land use plan. Other key concerns were addressed at the July 23, 2023 meeting, including, you know, biological resources, visual resources, architectural design, SEQA. We covered a lot in the meeting in July 2023, but the outstanding items really honed in on drainage and then policy compliance with the land use plan. Okay, so this slide shows the site plan, which is exactly the same as what was reviewed by the Commission July 2023. It shows the house and garage and wing walls, sort of focused in on the eastern portion of the property. And then this slide is new. This is an updated grading and drainage plan that was not presented to the Planning Commission in July 23. This is an updated civil plan that shows a detention basin along the western side of the property where a drywell previously was proposed. So they've tweaked the grading and drainage to show a stormwater detention for a 25-year storm. And you'll notice that the earthwork associated with this is sort of a net balance, so no off-haul with the new grading and drainage plan. And then, like I said, the overflow stormwater drainage is now directed into this, you know, open basin. And you will notice that Attachment 2 did include the landscape plan, which also has not been changed since the previous review by the Planning Commission, but we did add a condition of approval, B2A, that requires the landscape plan to be updated to mesh with the new civil plan, you know, before building permit issuance. Now, the first floor plan includes the garage and then bedrooms on the lower level, and then the covered breezeway, sort of connecting the two buildings. As I mentioned before, it's a reverse floor plan. On the second floor, we have the kitchen and main living space, as well as media room, and then a covered deck along the western side. Now, the roof plan, sort of the lined portion of the roof is the tallest sort of shed roof element, and the remaining buildings and sort of the flats include flat roofs. So the shed roof is really the highest element and includes the standing seam metal. Now, again, the elevations remain the same as the previous review by the Planning Commission. This would face east in the Champs-Élysées cul-de-sac. And then the western elevation that faces the Coastal Trail and the State Park. Here we have the south elevation that faces the lands to the south, and then Young Avenue that provides access out to the State Park. And then the north elevation that faces the Miramar neighborhood. Along with the architectural plans, two separate renderings were included, and this is one that, sort of, from the Champs-Élysées cul-de-sac perspective. And then also the, sort of, the looking between the main building and the garage with a courtyard and sort of breezeway between the two, as well as the bridge that connects to the kitchen. Now, to get into the, sort of, the outstanding analysis, you know, like I mentioned, kind of the main thing that was requested the previous meeting was, you know, sort of to take a closer look at the grading and drainage. And, you know, that's exactly what we did. We requested that the applicant, you know, come up with something that goes above and beyond the normal 10-year, two-hour duration requirements. And what the civil engineer did was provide three different options. And once that was submitted to the city, the city hired a third-party independent peer review consultant, civil engineering consultant, and we selected them because of their experience with, you know, surface water and hydrological design. So Waterways Consulting Incorporated peer-reviewed all three stormwater options, as well as associated documentation, anything related to stormwater and drainage. We provided it in one package to Waterways, and they provided a sort of a response, conclusions, feedback on their independent peer review hired by the city. Now, per the recommendations of the peer review, they were supportive of the stormwater detention design. They did have some recommendations, and we added a condition of approval requiring one of the recommendations to be conducted prior to the issuance of building permits, and that was, you know, hydrological modeling, just to verify that the stormwater detention design would perform as designed. So... Now, these two slides show the 25-year stormwater detention design. You'll see that one of the drywells is still included, but then the overflow would go into the stormwater, the open basin stormwater detention. And, you know, part of the selection of this, it was, you know, met the requirements of the, you know, what the peer review civil engineer suggested, and it minimized the off-haul, because that is something that came up in previous meetings, the concern about, you know, substantial off-haul from the height, the site. And then this is the, sort of, the western portion of the stormwater detention basin. Now, the other outstanding item, Land Use Plan Policy Conformance. The policy in particular that came up in the previous meeting was 7-12 and Site-Specific Shoreline Hazard Evaluation. And we took a look at that and, you know, looked at, you know, in detail about the language associated with the policy, and it really has to do with hazards on the coast. So, you know, given that there is some distance between the subject property and actual coastal hazards, that we felt that this was not a concern. The sort of compliance with 712, that the site is not applicable, given the distance between the actual coast and the subject property. Now, the site is within a tsunami inundation zone, so you may have noticed that Condition B3 does require the recordation of a tsunami disclosure prior to the issuance of the building permits. And this is consistent with other development that's been approved within Miramar since our new LCP land use plan has been certified. Now, one other land use plan policy was brought to our attention and, you know, discussed in the memorandum that was distributed this afternoon, and that's related to Policy 7-55 and related to flood plan, flood protection. And what we're recommending is an additional condition of approval to be added to the conditions, requiring that the hydrological modeling that's required through Condition B5 identify the 100-year flood event. Now, Policy 7-55 talks about a 100-year flood event, which we're not... It's undetermined where that actually exists at this point, so that's one thing that we're going to request through the modeling. And if the design of the home is below 2 feet, we'll ask for subtle modifications to the design so that the house does meet this policy. And if it turns out it's above the point, then it's, you know, policy compliance is not an issue with the current design. And then, so B6, this is, this slide shows the draft language for the added condition. So we feel that, you know, with this condition, the project is in compliance with the Policy 7-55. And like I said, the memorandum goes into a little more detail. Now, in regard to noticing and public comment, the site was posted for the meeting this evening. We also mailed notices to all the neighbors within 300 feet, and then we posted a legal notice in the Daily Journal. And we did receive some comments. Attachment 5 of the staff report included a copy of a letter that was received at City Hall with signatures, as well as another sort of summary from the applicant. And then also the memorandum that was distributed this afternoon. We received one additional email with a few concerns, primarily related to the peer review. And we do have Matt Weld logged in this evening from Waterways Incorporated, and primarily to address any questions that may come up in related to the peer review. So we're happy to have Matt with us this evening. And then Commissioner Gossett mentioned, you know, she asked that I provide adopted minutes available in the presentation, so I have hyperlinks of all the minutes that were adopted from the previous meetings where this project was under review. Now, one of the comments in the email that was received this afternoon had some concerns about the SEQA analysis and whether or not it was still pertinent to this project. And the answer is yes. The mitigated negative declaration was certified when the Tenanted Parcel Map was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and then the final sub-final map was recorded at the County Recorder's Office, and then several houses were built on lots created through the parcel map. So at this point, you know, the MND is still valid and applicable to this project. And then also a SEQA exemption is, it's very common to, you know, adopt a SEQA exemption with individual houses associated with a subdivision. That said, the mitigation measures were adopted through conditions of approval and are referenced in the conditions of approval in the draft resolution this evening. So the next couple of slides, I just, we have our potential, see our recommendation, as well as potential actions that the Planning Commission could take. You know, one, as mentioned in the staff report, can adopt the resolution approving the project with the added condition of approval, B6, or Planning Commission could adopt the resolution with added or modified conditions of approval, or provide staff direction for denial, directing staff to return to the Planning Commission with the resolution for denial. So... So suggested meeting format, you know, provide the applicant an opportunity to speak, as well as folks from the public, and we can answer any Planning Commission clarifying questions. Maz, our city engineer, is here this evening, as well as Matt Weld from Waterways Incorporated. We're all here to answer any questions and provide any clarity that the Commission may want. So, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. At this point, I would invite Mr. Masara, if you would like to speak. And we customarily give 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 10 minutes should work on the initial presentation. I'd like the opportunity for rebuttal, depending on how the hearing goes. I'm Mark Masara, and I represent the applicant. Initially, I'd like to thank you for hosting us tonight, and I know that this hasn't been easy, that there's been a whole lot of information, including all of that just supplied to you by your staff, who I'd also like to thank for now seven years of work on this single house, and in particular, over the last 14 months of hydraulic and drainage work, along with the scientific peer review and collaboration that went into that. I also want to thank the neighbors and the public for constructive input, suggestions, and goodwill, nearly all of which has been incorporated into three major redesigns of the house and a host of other groundbreaking mitigation measures. I won't exhaust you with the entire seven years associated with your review of this project, but am happy to answer questions. As referenced in my most recent correspondence and previous correspondence, the project has incorporated at least three major redesigns and numerous other modifications in response to input that we've received from you and from the public and from staff. Importantly, for this hearing, however, is what has occurred since our last Planning Commission in July of 2023, where you focused, particularly Commissioner Johannes, who's not here tonight, on drainage issues and neighbors' concerns related to off-site flooding. Needless to say, we and your staff has focused since then on drainage, drainage, drainage. Recall that in July 2023, we had offered a 30-foot easement for future drainage improvements related to improvements to the Pullman Ditch, which is not on our property. It's adjacent. This was an unprecedented first time offer that no other property near or on the Pullman Ditch has ever provided, despite the fact, again, that 2800 Champs, as they say, does not own- despite the fact, again, that 2800 Shams Elisei does not own any part of the ditch. In addition, recall that Commissioner Joe Anis focused on periodic flooding of neighboring properties along the ditch and asked about increasing the city's drainage resiliency of periods of, you know, of a hundred to a thousand years. And I would point out that fortunately, despite sustaining heavy rains during this past winter, there was no documented flooding that occurred along the Pullman Ditch, which may have been related to recent improvements made by an up-coast neighbor, which this commission approved. At any rate, when we went to work with your staff and your peer review consultants and designed onsite basins for collection and natural treatment of stormwater, what we did was design three alternatives. A twenty-five-year storm basin that could contain over five inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period, a five-hundred-year storm basin, which could contain over eight and a half inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period, and a one-thousand-year storm basin, which could contain over nine-point-two inches of rain in twenty-four hours. We remain able to build any of these alternative basins in part because we have such a large property and so much open space. And I'll just add one thing to what Scott said. Our landscape architects, the Kikuchi firm, has a letter in the record saying that the native riparian landscaping that could assist in this basin for a thousand years will not even be visible to the naked eye. The berm on the basin is like one foot. It's just the size of the basin that can accommodate these storms. Now, ultimately, and I think you'll hear tonight from the peer review consultants, they felt that even the twenty-five-year basin was so far in excess of anything the city has ever required for a single-family home, that that was actually overkill. But it does provide all kinds of opportunities in the future to work with that thirty-foot easement, the concerns on Pullman, and using our property productively to resolve these flooding concerns. And that was really the difference, the basic difference in the size of these basins. And the fact that obviously, the larger the basin, the more off-haul soils you might have. And it's not, it's not a lot, it's not like a major development. But we're, you know, cognizant of the fact that the neighbors wouldn't appreciate moving any dirt off-site. So we've tried to avoid that. Even the twenty-five-year basin vastly exceeds the city's ten-year storm resilient policy and your recent approval of the ten-year basin at 2778 Pullman Avenue, the home that's just recently been completed along Highway One there. This, to our knowledge, is the most significant drainage proposal for a a single-family house in the history of the city. And for that reason alone, we urge you not to miss this opportunity to approve a unique, inspiring criteria for future development proposals. There are just a number, a couple of other miscellaneous items that I think can be helpful to this discussion. First is the policy issues that Scott referenced. Back in July 2023, we heard about LCP policy seven twelve. And that pertains to and recommends future sea rise evaluations and acknowledgements. The LCP itself states that the policy is applicable to bluff-top and beachfront development. These policies are derived from Coastal Act Sections 30235 and 30253 and apply only to coastfront and oceanfront properties and bluffs. To date, the Coastal Commission has never attempted to apply these policies to an inland property, and neither should Half Moon Bay. As shown in my correspondence, 2800 is not an oceanfront parcel. The building site at 2800 is over nine-hundred feet inland and closer to Highway One than the coast. 2800 is landward of a state beach, two separate public roads, a public parking lot, a paved bike path, and at least two other houses. It would be ironic and unfortunate and unleash unprecedented upheaval for local planning if such policies were applied to 2800 now. Yet, in any event, we worked with your staff and have proposed condition B three to require a recorded tsunami disclosure and deed restriction for the project, which is commonly used by the Coastal Commission and other local governments throughout the coastal zone in similar situations. The next policy was LCP policy seven dash fifty-five, and that was raised more recently. This policy includes mapped areas prone to flooding and avoidance measures for coastal hazards and flooding. First, and critical, 2800 is not mapped in the LCP for flood hazards. That's LCP figure seven dash six for hundred-year flood potential, and no evidence exists whatsoever showing that the thirty-six-foot elevation building envelope on 2800 is prone to flooding. It is, in fact, seven feet higher than the nearby homes with historic flooding exposure and is as high or higher with nearby homes that have never flooded. Remember, 2800's building envelope is over nine-hundred feet inland from the coast. Even so, adjacent LCP policies seven dash fifty-two and seven dash fifty-three aren't supposed to result in denial of development or perpetual continuance of development applications, but instead are designed to encourage smart planning and mitigation. That's exactly what you have with 2800. Without being exhaustive, just look at the unprecedented thirty-foot drainage easement and the twenty-five-year storm basin elements of this unique project. Also, in the record now is the hydraulic study for the Rossi property at 2804 Shams Elisei Boulevard. This was a recent study for the Rossi property and adjacent owner of the Pullman Ditch and evaluates flooding of that property. Importantly, we agree with everything in this report. It is true, in our opinion, that the Rossi finished floors should have been higher than twenty-nine feet. LCP policy seven dash fifty-five, which the report cites, but doesn't acknowledge, came after the house was built, recommends that the first floor of such houses should not be habitable. They should be non-habitable first floors, breakaway walls, and other measures that are increasingly common along the house for low-lying properties. This is now common practice throughout the coastal zone and along rivers nationwide. 2800 and this application doesn't have that issue and has, as I said, a thirty-six-foot high elevation and has never experienced flooding and isn't mapped for the hundred-year flood exposure. So regarding the Rossi report, and lastly on this, we support Mr. Rossi and his team if they want to submit an application to comply with LCP policy seven dash fifty-five. And we look forward to being on the record in support of that application. Otherwise, that report is not relevant to this application and discussion. Also in the record is something called appellate petition. It isn't neither. It is rather a request by certain neighbors for another continuance and more hearings on this application. First, and in their defense, the signatories to this petition agreed to sign before the staff report came out. So perhaps they weren't aware of the unprecedented measures taken to address their concerns. Second, however, the petition raises no issues of relevance or merit with respect to land use at 2800 or this application. Instead, the petition references vague concerns, which appear to be the neighbors' concerns regarding off-site flooding of low-lying parcels for owners of the actual Pullman Ditch, just like the Rossi report. 2800 is neither low-lying nor an owner of the Pullman Ditch. Instead, this application for 2800 is offering to do more to resolve ditch concerns than anyone in the city has ever offered. And ironically, appellate demand in the petition, urgent action, while at the same time calling for indefinite unconstitutional delay of these proceedings. Ironic, because the approval of the project would be the single most significant step the city has ever taken to address the long problem of inappropriately designed houses that are inappropriately located too close to the ditch. Ironic, because approval actually results in positive forward action. Lastly, and in conclusion, this is the seventh public hearing for this project. Five at the planning commission and two with the AAC. While staff is creative in its report in how they interpret Government Code Section 65905.5, the law doesn't read that way and doesn't give credit for hearings so old they predate the law and the five-hearing state law rule. It was, in fact, designed to prevent exactly what has happened here. Thus, we've already violated that law and broken the five-hearing rule. Recall that I asked you to approve or deny this project fourteen months ago in July of 2023. In any event, we have, as we have since 2017, since 2023, worked in good faith with your commission and with your staff and your peer review team to again bring you a project that is totally and completely consistent and in compliance with all conditions related to the Stalaski subdivision, all city codes and regulations, all LCP provisions, the Coastal Act, and all other known land use rules, objectives, and goals. No variances, no exceptions, no special accommodations of any kind. After seven years and seven hearings, with staff recommendations for approval at every single step along the way, anything less than an approval tonight by the planning commission can reasonably be understood as nothing short of a constructive denial and an unconstitutional takings of the property. In the interest of doing our part to fulfill the approved subdivision and alleviate the extreme housing crisis in California and comply with constitutional land use principles and state law, we urge you to support your staff and peer review consultants and approve the project. We're available to answer any questions you may have, and I'd like to reserve time for rebuttal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the public comment portion of our meeting. And the first speaker will be Brad. And Peter Wellish has yielded his three minutes to Brad. So can you add that to the clock? We could wait while Scott finds the photos, too. So that, well, also so the public who's watching the meeting can also see these photos.
Through the chair.
Sure.
If you wish to share your items with us, we're happy to receive them as evidence. That's fine. But I think the slides are also ready, so.
Do you get the slides on your?
We do. Yes, we could see it.
Good evening. I'm beginning with the following resolution required to approve this building application. Planning Commission Resolution, Resolution for Approval. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning commission takes the following actions. Finds that, on the basis of the whole record before it, there is no substantial evidence that the project, as proposed and mitigated, will have a significant effect on the environment. I'm here to explain why there is substantial evidence to deny it. There are numerous instances within the application that show no understanding of local conditions. These may be oversights, avoidance, or pure ignorance. The ditch. These all come from the, what was put out by Scott Phillips. Waterways Consulting, page one, first paragraph. Although the Pullman Ditch is not a FEMA-mapped water course, it has historically been a source of local flooding and has been identified as a priority for future drainage improvements. We understand the infiltration tests were performed in June of 2024. We were not provided with rainy season groundwater levels. 2024 was, in fact, the hottest boreal summer on record. Global surface temperatures from June to August were record-breaking, one-point-two-four degrees above the 1991 to 2020 average. And here are the rainfall averages. The rainfall averages are over five inches in December, January, February, and a mere point-two in June. Consequently, any statistics that were taken or anything from that is pointless, in my view. JPM Wees, page one. Based on conservative values for the percolation test, the ground could absorb five inches of water till saturated. Letter from Mark Massara, attorney at law. The basin will ensure that no runoff associated with the project will ever enter Pullman Ditch, but instead be able to be collected, treated, and naturally percolate onsite, even during very severe storms. Can I please have the flood photograph? So this is the property that Mr. Massara said is not subject to flooding. There it is flooded. This photo represents a recent flood without any impervious surfaces. And before the ditch wall on the northern side of the ditch adjacent to the Rossi property was built, while the Rossi property was still being flooded, this floodwater has not been accounted for by Waterways Consulting, JMH Wees, the architect, or Mark Massara. City staff relied on data and information supplied by Mark Massara, attorney at law, that was not a fair and reasonable representation of the conditions or the facts. The basin, Waterways Consulting. Grading and drainage summary. The designs propose a route roof and landscape runoff to a constructed earth retention basin at the southwest end of the parcel. It appears that all runoff from the proposed impervious improvements and adjacent landscaped areas is effectively routed to the basin. The basin is sized to allow full capture and retention of all precipitation volume resulting from a thousand-year, or now twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm event. From the planning commission, agenda report. The open basin scenarios will detain the stormwater from the impervious surfaces added to the new structure. Still with this photo, again, the photo shows the property without any impervious surfaces and before the ditch wall on the northern side of the ditch adjacent to the property was built. During the review of previous home designs, soil off-haul was identified as a concern. The twenty-four-year stormwater detention option would require eleven cubic yards of net soil off-haul. Our home across the cul-de-sac had over fifty-five cubic yards excavated for percolation tanks. Eleven cubic yards is twenty percent of what we have, and our property is significantly smaller and has never been flooded. From the California Department of Public Health. Health officials urge Californians to remove standing water. The coastal bluffs. Letter from Mark Massara, attorney at law. Bluff-top and beachfront development. Mostly crucial, however, is the fact that the policies in question do not apply to the property of 2800 Shams Elisei. Those policies which refer in general to California Coastal Act policies, I won't read the numbers, relate to coastal bluff-top and beachfront development. read the numbers, relate to coastal bluff top and beachfront development. To date, the Coastal Commission has never attempted to apply those policies to inland development property. From the Environmental Hazard, Half Moon Bay. Bluff top and beachfront development is defined as development within 300 feet landward of the bluff line or edge, or 300 feet landward from the inland extent of the beach. Could I have the photo that Mr. Massara put in his document, the coastal bluffs, please? Okay. That shows the coastal bluffs, and that shows the, the property in question. The property at twenty-eight hundred Champs-Elysees most definitely lays within 300 feet of the landward edge of the bluff line. This is not an inland property development. From Geo Forensics, Inc. Site observations. We would characterize the drainage of the lot to be sheet flow to the west. Sheet flow to the west. That sheet flow and all water directed off twenty-eight hundred are aimed directly at that, that point on the coastal bluffs. Planning Committee Chair and Members, City Staff, Ms. King. As you have seen and heard, the attempt to contain flooding on the proposed, in the proposed earthen pond is farcical, and the task of directing waters away from both the ditch and coastal bluffs impossible, making a denial of the development of twenty-eight hundred Champs-Elysees the only possible motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Patrick Johnson, and then after that, Beth McInerney.
Patrick, Patrick Johnson, four thirty-one Kehoe. I was on the Planning Commission back in the day, I want to say oh eight, oh nine. And I live at a ditch. Mine's called the Kehoe Ditch. And so I brought that forward to the Planning Commissioners at the time, and I was a Planning Commissioner at the time, that needed to be addressed because we had issues with erosion, we had issues with flooding, and the banks were falling apart, and the city tried to fix it, and they've got in trouble because they didn't fix it correctly, and it was sued. So with that said, that kind of killed the ditch repair that we were talking about and the study that needed to be done. And during that time, I was on my own task force with a few other people about the ditches. And I was at the meetings here, and people came to us because the Kehoe Ditch wasn't, we're not the only ones, we have a ditch, and then all of a sudden, everybody's got a ditch. So we went to, and I personally went to the Pullman Ditch, and on the picture here, the ones that's closest to the beach at the very end was completely flooded. And the photo that you saw, this gentleman showed, and I'm for the project, I want to see this house built, I'm just sharing a little bit of history, that's all I'm trying to do. And these houses were flooded, and that, that photo is true. So this has been ongoing, and it hasn't been fixed or corrected. We've talked about it as Planning Commissioners, but nothing got done. And I remember a story where there was a farmer that had a backhoe because that ditch got plugged or blocked on the top, and he went in and went with his backhoe and broke all the rules so that these people wouldn't flood anymore. So people were just doing what they could in an emergency services kind of situation. I know you guys know you're not supposed to do that unless you get a permit and all that stuff, but this guy did. So he looked like the hero, but then he looked like the bad guy because he broke the rules. But when I went to go see the house, it was completely flooded in the basement, and it was pretty bad. And those photos, and thank you for bringing that, that's what I saw at one point, too. I actually walked the streets because I'm going around handing out my flyers, which I won't get into, and I saw this really beautiful development in the house that's on the left, and I went, wow, they built a bridge over the ditch. And I'm like, how do they pull that off? But that's pretty impressive, but that's not for me, and I wasn't part of this at that time. So with all the reviews of all the modeling that's been done and all the drainage that's been done and the, and the, the proper landscaping that I'm hearing, this, these people are doing, these are all the things that we all know as Planning Commissioners, they're on the right step, they're doing what they need to do. But we need to be, a master plan needs to be done with not only the Pullman Ditch, but all the ditches. That's basically why I was brought here, and Hazel said, Pat, you know about ditches, you're the ditch man. So I wanted to bring that forward to you and just put those two cents. Not opposed to this project, what I am worried about is public safety and flooding in people's homes deteriorating. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth, and then after Beth, we will have Mary Ruddy.
Thank you. I have, I didn't have a lot of time to put copies together like last time, but my other ones should be in record, and it's a photo book that will kind of illustrate the walk I'm about to go through. And again, thank you for hearing us time after time, complaining about seven meetings when this kind of started as a Walmart and saying, oh, we had to change it, we had to change it. Well, yes, the 6,000 square foot project did have to be pared down. So naturally, there's going to be multiple meetings, so I'm not sure I understand the woe is me there. But there's a little bit of a fairy tale here, and there's invisible ditches, and there's magic creeks that absorb all the water and don't have an impact on things further down the creek. So what I did was I, my neighbors must have thought I was crazy, but I walked down the entirety of the creek, the ditch, and I'm not an expert, so the Plask, Plask, Plasky, Stalasky, thank you, Stalasky, from the property all the way to the state park bathrooms, which are locked up. So from the property, oh, we have signage telling you about this meeting. Well, the first picture on the front of that photo album is the sign flat on the ground, and I staked it up, put it in, back in. So words we can say, oh, we cited it, we told everyone. Okay, that's great. Every point, there's going to be a counterpoint, I'll try to be succinct. So as I walked down the creek, I took pictures. So as you're looking at the photo, it should be sequential, the photo book should be sequential, from the property all the way to the state park bathrooms. So because of the, the water flow and the vegetation that has overgrown the ditch and can't handle the water flow with the current state of impervious surfaces, the current The road eroded and fell into the creek, and you can see those lovely scenic orange, I don't know what they're called, like the, they're like Denver, they're, they're temporary, the orange plastic barriers. There's a barrier in the creek that fell in the creek, it's been there, and it's collecting garbage and debris. And then those orange barriers are graffitied, it's not so scenic. But that's a direct result of probably nursery, men's exchange, and rocket farms, and, you name it, I don't, I don't need to place any blame, but it starts somewhere, right? So it ends up there, and then, so that road gets closed down, and because that road gets closed down, they close down the bathrooms because they can't get the state park truck in to service it every day, which actually they do come and get the garbage, so they have found a way to do that. But they lock the bathrooms up, and so every day, it's, I, one of the pictures, it's really gross in there, I'm so sorry, but pictures say, you know, give a thousand worth, a thousand words, I'll be real quick. People go to the bathroom along the locked bathroom, the cement bathroom, and they leave their wipes and their number one and two, not to put too fine a point on it, like broad daylight, kids, adults, you name it, tourists, and I'm like, there's a bathroom, just walk like half a mile that way, and there's signs telling him to go the other way, there's barriers saying, don't come back here, this is not a bathroom. And that's all because of upstream. It's all because of, of the situation with the water flow. So thank you so much for your time, thank you for listening to my story, and I bid you good night.
Thank you, Beth. Mary, and then after Mary, I have Joe Farrell.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ruddy from three fifteen Roosevelt Boulevard. I'm a 36-year resident of my neighborhood, same home, a little closer to the Naples Creek, which is a natural waterway, seeing even early 19th century maps that I've seen at the county museum. But instead, tonight, we're talking about a property that would like to be built along a waterway that is not natural, it is man-made. I've attended a number of these meetings, including the one in July 2023, at which time we were assured by the city that work would be done on the waterway called the Pullman Ditch, and that inspections would be done, and various other things have been done. To date, I know of no such work, no such remediation of issues of flooding, drainage, and now we're hearing that there's going to be a proposed basin to try and resolve an issue right in the middle of a floodplain. Doesn't make any sense to me. But I will let some others who have better information speak of that. I'd like to just go back a little bit in history, because that's my thing, and have you imagine that along Alameda Avenue, there was the train chug-chugging along way back when there was just ranchland and farm country. No government was given out any permits to do anything. Farmer could kind of do what they wanted to do, and a farmer did, he dug out that irrigation ditch. Didn't have a permit, didn't need one. But are we really living by a standard of 100-plus years ago? Don't we expect our government to help protect our properties and our beaches, our bluff tops that are being eroded? The very beach that so many of us love and that we welcome our tourists and families to is being so affected. We know global warming is a real fact, but an unnatural, man-made waterway needs to be controlled, something needs to be done, because guess what? We can fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Joe? And after Joe, I have Jan Leonard.
December 13. I'm in front of Rocket Farms.
Thank you. So I, I guess you can start now. So first of all, thank you, Mary, for the history lesson and for just being right on on this. I also remember in July of last year how this was continued, and we had great support from the commissioners of like, let's solve this, it's the most urgent problem. And so, you know, we're, I was very hopeful, hopeful, and I as well haven't seen a lot. This approval of the house is, although I don't oppose it, I think the issue of the ditch drainage is super important, and I, I agreed with the findings of, let's figure this out first, and then we can approve the house. So I don't know how many people have seen this, but I, I'm going to show you as this is the, this is the real reason why the, why this ditch, a man-made ditch that runs across all of our properties, is being flooded on storms. This is in December, it's a major storm. Please go ahead. And this is the first.
December 13. I'm in front of Rocket Farms. Where we see the water coming from Rocket Farms, it's going down to a ditch, but then is draining over into our property. And the water is draining into two places. Drains down the road, which then empties into a ditch, or it comes down into this area.
Okay, so that's, that's one side of the road. Now you're going to see the other side. But by the way, when this water was coming in, it was coming in in sheets, and you could see that it was like a, you know, a giant ice cream cone, it was all.
Seeing the pictures of the water that is, that come off of Rocket Farms' property. Here it is, right here, in this break, it comes across the street, it's empty, takes a right-hand turn, and is now dumping onto the properties in here, Mark. This is all from Rocket Farms.
Thank you. That is the issue. If we stop the water from Rocket Farms, and by the way, it's going on, I mean, it's just like any neighbor, we're not allowed to have water drainage from our property onto somebody else's. This is the same thing. And I know that because I researched our deed, there is no restriction on our deed, there is no, there's no allowance for water to go, go across it, and we're not even being compensated like anybody else. We'd like this fixed, please. And this, if we do that, we get, the ditch gets fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. After Jan, I have Susan.
Good evening. I'm Jan Leonard. I live at the north end of Champs-Elysees Boulevard, one lot away from Naples Creek, which is, was a natural waterway, became a ditch over the years. I just want to make a case that nature is no respecter of either property lines or political compromises or regulations. Nature is going to do what nature is going to do. And this whole coast side, essentially all of Half Moon Bay, is built on a shelf of sediment derived from washout from the Santa Cruz Mountains. The ocean air comes in, goes up to the Santa Cruz Mountains until it condenses, falls as rain, and then the water runs down that entire range of, of mountains, following the path of least resistance back to the ocean, coming right through Half Moon Bay, which is why we have this rich agricultural land along the coast here. And it's a seasonal wetland. The house, the place that my house is built, this whole neighborhood is a seasonal wetland, and if it were done today, we shouldn't be able to get building permits anywhere in there because it should be preserved as a wetland. That ship has sailed. But the important thing to remember is that by increasing the hardscape at twenty-eight hundred Champs-Elysees, you're going to have 4,000 square feet, odd square feet of house, plus whatever in the way of patios and driveways and sidewalks and so forth, increased hardscape that may or may not all drain to a retaining pond, which it's very difficult to understand how you would grade the lot in such a way that it's all going to drain in the lot. But that hardscape is going to increase runoff, that being a somewhat elevated lot that doesn't normally flood very often. It's going to increase runoff to lower-lying properties into the Seymour Ditch, exacerbating that problem. It's going to, I mean, it sounds to me like these new developments that we've got on the south end of Roosevelt and Champs-Elysees have got flooding problems, and it surprises me that nobody's suing the city yet. There are going to be claims against insurance companies and the homeowner. As a homeowner in the area, I'm very concerned that the more flooding claims come in, the more the rest of us in the neighborhood are going to have trouble with homeowners' insurance, which many of us are already having on general principles in California. Thank you.
Thank you. And after Susan, we have Anju.
Hello, I'm Susan. I live on 2805 Champs-Elysees. And I want to say good evening to all the members and thank you to the neighbors that made comments. I have several points to make along with pointed quotes and hope you'll consider them all. In a way, it's a bit of a summary of what many of the neighbors have already said. One, the water flow into the Pullman Ditch. "Water, water, where art thou? Let me count the ways," Shakespeare. Overflow from the Half Moon Bay groundwater basin and runoff from Rocket Farms, as Joe just pointed out. Two, decreased ability to contain the increased stormwater. "Bless me, Father, for I have signed more building permits. The last over 4,000-square-foot house was just completed in 2024." Catholic confessional. There have been a total of five houses built by the Pullman Ditch since 2017. Limited culvert on House approved in Alameda in the 1990s, which isn't serving us well now. Third point, regulating farm use to drain water into the Pullman Ditch. "You've got to know when to hold them," Kenny Rogers. There's no analysis of water to inspect for pesticides or other contaminants coming down into the ditch, and no enforcement of where water overflow from the farm should be diverted into the Pullman Ditch. Four, increased erosion. "Take me to the river, drop my house in the water," Talking Heads. Homeowners aren't allowed to manage the ditch, even though we own it, without doing any repairs to prevent erosion. And there's no unified plan to prevent backward or forward flow problems to other neighbors along the house, or along the ditch, rather. And the Pullman Ditch personally, we've seen, has doubled in width and depth since 2017. Fifth point, approval of building permits. "Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved another housing permit in need," traditional. Why are more building permits being approved along the ditch when homes are at risk and cause less permeable surfaces, as pointed out? And who takes the risk if planning is approved for the Vidovic House being built if flooding occurs on his property and spreads? Do we just let it rip? And the sixth point, coordinated efforts. "For united we stand, divided we fall." That's the brotherhood of man. We want communication for all the Pullman House owners. And as Mary pointed out, to get some follow-up from the meeting from July of 2023, that you are going to deal with the ditch. And working with other groups such as the Coastal Commission, Army Corps of Engineers, the county, the state, all work together to regulate this waterway. And that's the end of the six points, and thank you for your attention.
Good evening, everyone. Yes. When I saw this, I was just confused. And I could not understand that why are we even discussing this today? This construction, when we spent two hours, almost two hours, last July? And it was deliberated by this esteemed planning commission that something was going to be done about the ditch. Like Mary said, nothing. We don't know, nothing's happened. We, as a community, say no. No more flooding for this community. No more a homeowner will stand in a knee-deep water at midnight in his living room. My neighbor did. No more. This overflow is also eroding our bluffs, our coastal. If you take a walk, the end of the Vidovic property is hitting the bluffs. We were promised that this was going to be fixed before any other project is considered. Like I said, I'm just confused. It's not been fixed. I thought it would be fixed and also insured and would be tested that no more flooding is caused. And where is the water being diverted? That would also be, would have planned. It is suggested in the plans that a water detention basin to hold the rainwater. But they're missing the point. There's water coming from the overflow, the chemicals in the water? I come from India. We're trying to get rid of standing water in our streets, in our homes, because it causes malaria, diseases. I mean, I have friends, a friend, yeah, who've died of dengue fever. So why are we talking about standing water again? The Department of California is urging Californians to get rid of water bodies. So no home should be taking complete onus on fixing it and managing it. And history shows. So we need your help to fix the ditch, take care of flooding and erosion of our bluffs before we allow another property to be built. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Anju. And Bridget, we have some online speakers.
So we have one online speaker, John Rossi. I'll allow you to talk. Whoops. Sorry, I moved you over. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Can you? So I wasn't able to attend. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I guess, you know, I have a few points. So I live at 2804 Champs-Elysees. I've heard my name come up numerous times today, which is, used to really upset me. Now it's becoming actually entertaining because it's been so repetitive since I've moved in over the last three years. I also live on probably one of the most visited and photographed stretches of an earthen, hand-dug, man-made ditch than I would, you know, ever have considered, thinking there's a beautiful coastline right by. A couple of points. One, Farrell's correct. Something needs to be done with Rocket Farms. This has been reported, reported, and reported. It was discussed last July as a problem. Nothing's been done about it. One, during stormwater release. Two, they still dump water through our property during the summer. I have taken pictures, reported this to the city. Actually, I had to go in and have people hand dig a small channel to alleviate standing water because I was getting mosquitoes on my property. Nothing's been done about it. So I'd like to understand what the city's plans are there and see this documented. Two, thank you, Mr. Masara Esquire, for recommending I completely redesigned my home. I love it because guess who approved that? The city, right, under a CDP, or under a development plan. So thank you for that, but we're not going to do anything differently. The reality is, you put in a 30-foot easement. You've mentioned it over and over again as what a great gift you've given. Why don't you use that easement? Put in some type of culvert or diversion to release heavy stormwater, especially when it builds up against pipes to the south that get smaller and smaller, which is listed in my hydrology report, before you think about actually putting in a home? Fix that problem first and then develop the house. I just don't understand the logic here. I also agree with Anju that putting in a holding pool that's going to have standing water with runoff from a highway that's very busy. We've all driven Highway 1. It's loaded with cars. There's a ton of motor oil and debris and pollution that builds up there, as well as Rocket Farms, who dumps water through with God knows what in it. Point is, why don't you fix the Pullman Ditch problem that's been reported over and over and over again first, and then think about putting a house in? It just makes no sense to me that you will continue to make the same mistakes over and over again with all of the warnings and precautions. And there was another individual, I can't recall her name, who's right. This is the kind of stuff that does lead to lawsuits. When people get flooded, it's going to go right back to the city, who failed under extreme and noticeable warning to do anything about it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We're going to take a five-minute break before we go to clarifying questions. Okay, thank you. We will now move to clarifying questions, and I'll ask Commissioner Gorn if you have any questions you'd like answered.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We have one public comment that was on a video.
Oh, that's right.
Michael Becker. So if we could just play that and if PCT can view it.
I'm going to reopen the public hearing.
I apologize. I just kept my notes here.
I want to see that.
Hi, I'm Michael Becker at 2908 Champs-Elysees Boulevard here in Half Moon Bay. And I'm frankly concerned about the project with the ditch to the south of me. Really, it seems like the planning is not complete. There's no game plan moving forward to deal with the many issues that are arising out of it, including impact on property, contamination of the beach, flooding of neighbors' property, and the influx of nitrates and nitrites that will be washing down through the area. And it seems like until a plan is put forward on that, I don't see it makes sense to take another step forward into an unknown mess that is unresolved. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Masara did want to speak for two minutes.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mark Masara, representing the applicant. I can be really brief here. We don't disagree with any of the comments that were provided in the public hearing. Pullman Ditch is frankly a small, non-Riparian waterway that needs management. Where we would take a different tact from the comments is that because I've been working with your staff, I know that since July 2023, and you'll probably hear this in the follow-up, they have been working like full-time on this ditch. And frankly, most of the folks that live along the ditch, we all participated in a recent survey. And some of the folks that testified here tonight not only participated in that survey, but those pictures that you saw from the flooding, right? That picture that Brad was relying on was taken during a rain event in which the Pullman Ditch is backed up because of obstructions. And so the adjacent properties have flooded. It's deliberately misleading inasmuch as it doesn't include the building site at 2800. And the basin that's been proposed, remember, we used to have the dry wells that were perfectly adequate to capture and percolate the runoff caused by this project. The basin can do even more. So the concern that we're somehow going to cause flooding of adjacent properties because of hardscape associated with the project is incorrect simply because the basin is designed to capture all of the runoff. And there's an overflow provision in the basin that sends the overflow, if any, over to the adjacent agricultural properties, which we also own. And so what we're doing here is we're trying to provide the city with assistance as we move forward resolving the neighbors' concerns. And when John Rossi proposes that, you know, I build a culvert first, I think what he doesn't understand is that we have to collaborate with you and with the city and city staff and a host of other agencies to implement these improvements. We don't know exactly what they're going to be. I mean, simply fixing the existing culverts and dealing with Rocket Farms would make a big impact. And so we're more than willing to collaborate on this stuff. But it's no reason, no reason whatsoever, to hold this project hostage. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will close the public comment portion of this meeting. And we may ask you to come back up to answer questions, Mr. Masara. Okay. Senator Gorn?
Hi. So I do have a couple of questions that I don't understand about. But I would say first, belittling Vice Chair Giannis's very real concerns about flooding and runoff in this area is not productive. And so my questions. Obviously, drainage was the big question at the last meeting. And so when I saw this came before us again, I was very eager to see what it was you guys were doing to fix that problem. And I had to really search. It's not in the staff report. In the staff report, it just says that there's a retention, a detention area west of the house. And so I think it would be helpful. I did find the map. It's in this grading and utility plan in Attachment 2. I don't know, is it Sheet C23? I think it would be good to post it so that people understand what the detention basin is. Because it's a one-foot-deep basin with a two-foot wall, is what I'm gathering from this picture. Be really good to put that up and so people can see what it is you're talking about and how far it goes and what it would be. I thought there would be more of an explanation about why this works and why it's important and how it works and what it would look like and what other ones have been around. And so maybe I just missed it. So that's my question. Like, is it somewhere in here that I couldn't find? Because this is the only thing that I found. That isn't it. That stormwater detention, 25 years, isn't it. That's not what I saw. It's this one here. It's in your thing. Can we get that one up? Because that has the details of it. This rounded basin. There it is. That was it. That's it. But back one. Is that it? No, that's not it. It was, this is the last half of it. There it is. That's it. Yeah, so that's a 500-year detention? No. That's not what I see, actually.
Chair Gossett, I'd be happy to provide some clarification.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
So I believe it was Attachment 3 or 4, the staff report included the peer review conclusion. And the peer review contained all the documents that were peer reviewed, including the three different detention options, as well as a previous hydrological report, soils report, and other documents that went into great detail on not only the grading, but the drainage and the three different options, and feedback on, you know, suggestions for which one would be the best. And so all three options were attached to the peer review. And then, as mentioned in the staff report, we selected the 25-year option and then went to our applicant and asked him to integrate the 25-year stormwater detention option into the plan set before scheduling the public hearing because we really wanted a complete plan set to, you know, provide to the commission.
That's the one that I wanted. That's the one that I wanted to have you put up, because it's in the applicant's, it's in the applicant's drawings. It's not one of the 500-year ones. It's this 25-year basin. It's one of your slides on your attachment 2. So if you could find it and put it up. I just think it'd be helpful to picture what's going on, and then you can explain it and talk about it, and it would be helpful, because that's the whole point of doing the stormwater basin in the first place is. I mean, I couldn't even find it when I went through this the first time. So it would be helpful. Do you see that? Not stormwater detention. Okay. It's not in the stormwater detention 25 years. It's in the applicant's drawings. Okay. So while you're doing that, I also, I was looking for some kind of a report, like a hydrology report, to explain why this works and why a one-foot-deep basin that extends for however far it extends, I don't know exactly how far it extends, why that works and why that's going to make such a difference. And so I didn't see that hydrology report, and I'm wondering if that's there. I also didn't see anything about the soils there. I don't know if that would be a report, but the, but like, it's mostly clay there. So as far as I know, but I'm not a hydrologist. And so like if you dig a, you know, a three-foot ditch, a three-foot basin, that wide and that deep, like what happens to that water and what? Like, I don't understand. So I wouldn't, I, that's, I don't see those reports in here. I don't see a report about the basin and what, so I'm wondering if I missed it.
I think I may be able to speak to a little bit about how this, how this was, the detention systems were designed and what their intentions are. So based on feedback from the last planning commission meeting, the applicant provided a few different alternatives and went above and beyond what is required as far as our municipal code and our state requirements for stormwater retention, understanding that, you know, these rainfall patterns and things are changing as we move forward in time. And so the applicant came back with three alternatives, the 25-year, the 500-year, and 1,000-year. And essentially, those detention basins are sized to take those types of storm events based on the project itself, based on its impervious surface. This is, they were not sized for the runoff from the ditch itself. That's outside of where these systems are designed for. This is supposed to be for onsite retention purposes, and that's what it was done. So that, and so when the applicant mentioned about the dry walls and the sizing for those, that was accurate. That was based on a 10-year, two-hour rain event. The applicant heard from the planning commission with respect to, you know, that not being enough, given that what we're seeing is a little bit more intense than what, you know, what has traditionally been acceptable as far as stormwater calculations. And so they provided these different alternatives. And one of the challenges with that was by incorporating a larger detention basin, there are some constraints. The soil types obviously are one, and the percolation test was an important component to that to ensure that the location for the detention basin would be suitable for percolation, because yes, the intent would be not to retain the stormwater within that pond and keep it as an ongoing pond, but to allow it to infiltrate as the rains recede and the groundwater levels recede. The other piece to this is that, you know, working with the applicant and Waterways Consulting, that, one of the recommendations from our peer review consultant is that you don't want to build up too much of a retention basin where you can't go too deep. At some point, you're going to hit groundwater. You don't want to build up your berm too much, because actually that increase in your berm height could have impacts to the, you know, to downstream impacts and other adjacent properties. So that was one of the considerations is why we didn't say, yeah, go with the absolute maximum largest you can possibly go, because that actually could have created a situation where, yes, they have plenty of retention space for their own offsite, onsite retention, but it could have an adverse impact on the neighboring properties. And so one of the recommendations in that Waterways peer review is to take a closer look at the hydraulic analysis prior to building permits to ensure that, you know, what is, what ultimately is approved in the building permit phase would be acceptable to meet the needs of the site, which it would be based on a 10-year event. But again, it's closer to the 25-year event. But also to take a look and make sure that any of this, any of the areas surrounding aren't impacted by any of the improvements that are being done.
Okay, so I'm actually trying to help the applicant by focusing on the fix, right? This is the fix. So no one really knows what the fix is, because you guys haven't like said, okay, this is how deep it is and this is how long. I still don't know how long it is. And I did also get in that explanation that basically hydrology report comes after approval. Is that what you want? Is that what you're asking for? Is that clear? Is that right?
So we have some, I mean, again, so the onsite, the hydraulic sizing and reporting that's been done, it's not a robust report, but there's been hydraulic calculations done as far as what's required to retain the onsite stormwater drainage. That's what's being met. Now, with respect to the water course itself and the long term.
So where is that? Where's the, where's the, where's the, like, I mean, I saw the peer review thing of previous studies, but where is the, the like breakdown of, okay, here's the problem, there's a certain amount of runoff from 4,700 square feet of impervious surface, and our idea is to build this retention, detention, retention basin? Like, and it's this long, and it's this wide, and it's this deep, and this is what's basis of it, it's clay, so it won't hold water long. I don't know. I don't, I don't see that anywhere.
I understand, I understand your comment. Yeah, I don't know if that was part of the submittal that's before you to the, tonight, but I know as far as the calculations that have been provided to Waterways and the Engineering Division, they did incorporate those numbers as far as what that stormwater runoff would be to ensure that the sizing is adequate. And I don't know if Matt Weld is available, and maybe, yeah, he can add a little bit more to what he reviewed as part of the peer review.
Maz, maybe I could also add a little to it before Matt jumps in, because Matt, if you could, you could also, I'm sure you did receive the materials from the original hydrology reports. There is a hydrology report, which the applicant had submitted along with the soils. So it was geology report, and behind that, there's a hydrology report that calculates the area, the flows, the percolation rates for the soil. And it looks like there's some drawings here that cover the Pullman Ditch in two locations as well. So Matt, if you could help us out with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, all right. Are you hearing me there?
Yes.
Yeah, I was provided with calculations that essentially evaluate the amount of runoff on the parcel prior to and following development, and evaluate the volume of storage that would be required to contain that volume of runoff, that increased volume of runoff onsite, and then supporting soils information from the geologist that tells you the amount of time that it would take for that volume of water to percolate into the ground. So yes, there on the screen is a list of the different documents that I reviewed and the JMWIS calculations. You know, they're very simple. It's not a complex problem. They're brief, but they're available. One of the things I just, I think should be made clear here, because from a lot of the comments, there seems to be some confusion. The, you know, the retention basin is designed to offset the impacts of the newly impervious areas on the parcel. It is not, it is not designed to address the ongoing flooding related to the Pullman Ditch. The goal of the basin is to ensure that the development doesn't make flooding worse.
Yes, that's exactly.
The greater goal of the drainage plan of the whole property is to ensure that it also doesn't preclude future improvements to address flooding associated with the Pullman Ditch. So by making this basin a little bit smaller, we're providing more space, not only for future improvements that would be part of a reach-scale flooding solution, such as larger culverts or increased area for the ditch itself. By making it smaller, we're also allowing that floodplain to continue to function in the vicinity of the basin.
So how big is the basin?
See if I can pull up dimensions.
And I assume, since it's just one foot down, it's supposed to stay dirt, right? Do you have to, do you have to like get rid of vegetation periodically, the way? I mean, I don't, I don't understand. So if you could explain?
No, it's just a dirt basin. It can be vegetated with landscaping features. We've, I've been involved in projects where this is part of a vineyard, and it periodically floods and still functions. It shouldn't be receiving any sediment, so it doesn't need to be regularly maintained or excavated, so there's no reason that you need to clear vegetation regularly. If there were a desire to prevent the formation of a wetland, for instance, that's a reason people would get into these things if there was, you know, native vegetation began to establish and you wanted to ensure the future ability to maintain it without it becoming an ecological feature. Otherwise, no. You can just plant it like any other part of your yard, and because it's only one foot deep, it's visually going to be relatively unnoticed.
And the two-foot wall around it is, that's just berm, right? That's not, that's just dirt?
Correct. Just a mound.
So basically, you're just digging a hole. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. It's like a?
Water pours from the buildings' hardscape features by way of pipes underground, pours into the basin, the basin fills up. And then, under most conditions, the basin slowly percolates into the ground. The water percolates into the ground as the stormwaters, as the rains diminish and the adjacent stormwater in the ditch draws down and groundwater draws down. It has an emergency overflow at the southern end. Hard to imagine that would ever really be required. But, you know, the unanswered question, as Maz pointed out, was that flooding from the Pullman Ditch, especially in the case where there's a blockage in the existing pipes, has the potential to get out into this area here. And so the additional hydraulic modeling that we suggested should be performed as a condition of approval is to evaluate offsite flooding impacting this property and how it travels through this property, and to ensure that that small mound around the basin does not block any overflow paths under current conditions or under proposed conditions.
Can I ask just a follow-up related to that real quick?
Sure, you can. I'm good.
Will the study also address the concerns about the greater impervious surfaces, or will it just be focused on the storm basin? Like, does it look at the whole project or just a portion of the project?
The study looks not at the impervious surfaces, because, well, in my opinion, that's already been addressed. I'm adequately satisfied that the basin, as proposed, addresses the impervious surfaces that are part of this project. So it's really looking to make sure that, it's trying to get a better understanding of exactly where the water goes when it gets blocked up in the Pullman Ditch adjacent to this property, and to make sure that the overflow paths, when that ditch is spreading out and flooding the neighbors, that none of the potential overflow paths of that water would be blocked by any of the proposed improvements, including the basin.
So in other words, you're not going to create, situate? The study would demonstrate whether or not the project creates backflow into the other neighbors' houses or properties? Great. And to just finish the thought, if the project does create these adverse conditions, would we then say no? Until we get this addressed, we're not going to move forward with the project. Is that the right way to understand the condition of approval that city staff has put into as an item for us to potentially add?
That is correct.
Excellent.
Can I ask a question, since we're talking about this basin? I did read, when you had done the perk study, that the perk rate, I believe, in this area of the basin was like 0.57 inches per hour, and you recommended, Matt, that it should be one inch per hour. So, I mean, I guess the question is, is the, how do you resolve that perk rate that doesn't meet the standard?
First, it was not us, it was not Waterways that did the perk rate, it was the project geologist.
Okay, thank you.
He provided a recommendation that we use a value of one inch per hour as a design infiltration rate based on his data. I'm looking back, let me pull up his study to see where the 0.5 came from.
Yeah, if you look at the map, they have a map of where the samples were pulled on the property. And there were two samples pulled, one was close to the house, and another was pulled, I thought, right in the middle of the basin.
And for people who didn't quite catch that, the retention capacity of the basin, which is approximately 30 by 90 by 1.1 feet, is a little over 2,000 square feet of water. Cubic feet of water.
Yeah, it's on page 101 of the packet, where the measured percolation rates were, are approximately 1.65 inches per hour in the location of the pH1 and approximately 0.57 inches per hour in pH2. So there was two varying percolates based on the location.
And so I guess I'm just wondering if the perk rate is below the standard of one inch per hour, how is this basin going to, you know, perk into the ground if the soil is all clay?
I think what the, what the study found was that there is two different rates, one that was higher than the one inch, 1.65, and then one that was at 0.57. So for the design infiltration, it was an average of the two.
Okay, because the sample, I think if you look at where they pulled the sample, the sample, the first sample where it was 1.57, that was right next to the house. I don't think it was at, in the basin. So the other one was within the basin, and that's what we need to drain. I don't think, you guys said you're piping the water to the basin. It's not draining right at the house. If I read the map correctly, when I looked at where the samples were pulled, maybe you can pull the map up so we can look at that? That would be helpful, just to make sure I'm not making a mistake in what I saw.
Chair Gossett, this is Steve McCarras. You are correct. So we're looking at this exhibit, and I think what Public Works Director is referring to is that there's two boreings, let's say they're 40 feet apart, and in the world of geology, they both have two different perk rates, right? Because they're bored in different areas, but overall, they take the average, because anywhere they bore, it's likely going to be different. So I think that was the result of the.
The other thing is that the samples were pulled in May, when, you know, the groundwater table was very low. And so we don't have groundwater table data. And, you know, in 2020, at the last meeting, we asked about groundwater data during wet and dry seasons. So I guess the question that I can't resolve in my mind is, will the basin, will the water within the basin actually perk if the groundwater table is at, you know, a foot, if it's official? And I did read in an old report from, the staff report from 2020, the geologist in one of the reports said that during geologist in one of the reports said that the, during the winter, the water table's very high. So I, that's, I'm just trying to figure out, will this basin actually drain? And what happens if it quits draining? And I guess the overflow goes into the other parts of the property and are we going to end up creating wetlands?
So I, I have a question that's related to that. I don't know if that is okay.
Well, I, I think it'd be great to get an answer to that.
Yeah, we need an answer to that question before we move on. I would like, uh, Matt, if you could answer that?
Yeah, um, you know, again, I, I pulled up the report here and, and we're relying on the geologist's recommendation for the infiltration rate. And it could be because of, you know, he's recommended one, which is about an average, but he, he could be taking other things into consideration, his knowledge of the site from the geotechnical exploration, changes in soil. But also, yes, um, soil changes with every boring on a site this size. So, um, what I would keep in mind here is that the success of this basin is not relying on that rate of infiltration. Um, it draws down really quickly at that rate, you know, in, in a matter of hours, right? Um, and this is, basin is designed to handle a twenty-five-year storm event. So if groundwater is temporarily high, as it will be right at the surface in these large storms, it will drop and there will be time for the basin, um, to drop to follow it down. Um, you know, you're, you're not designing for two twenty-five-year storms to happen one day after another. So there's, that coupled with the factor of safety of, of designing for a twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour event instead of a, uh, ten-year, two-hour event, you know, we've got a, we've got a really significant factor of safety that, you know, the, the boring, the boring log should be considered in the context of that factor of safety. If a wetland develops out there, um, you know, that's, that's, I guess that could be good or bad depending on who you ask and what the objectives of the landowner are. It's hard to comment on that.
Uh, just, just, oh, go ahead.
Sir, sorry, I was, I was also concerned about the people who live down at the end of that, um, that outfall, that, what do you, the storm basin. So, you know, that is a, that is a slope. So is the storm basin actually level? Or, or does it slope? Does the water travel down to the southern end? Or like, so in a perfect world, the Pullman ditch would work really great and all the water would go through the Pullman ditch and that, all the impervious surfaces of this new house would go right to this little storm basin. But in an imperfect world, where the Pullman ditch starts to send water into this ditch, I'm wondering into this basin, I'm wondering when that happens. It looks like all the water is getting funneled down to the southern end, that southern tip, where somebody else's house is. So it, like, can you explain that for me?
The, the basin is essentially flat and it fills from the bottom through a pipe. And there is an emergency overflow that's at the, uh, very southern tip, um, that points, uh, it's at the southwestern end of the basin and it points in a southerly direction. Yeah, thanks for pulling that up. And it's, it's a really subtle feature. Again, it's, it's a low point in the berm. So, you know, water doesn't get all the way to the top of the berm before it flows over this. Um, this, it's a sort of a rock line or like a cobble swale. Um, and so water will kind of decant out of the basin gently and spread out onto the flat ground there. Um, but, you know, more likely, water from, from very large floods, if they should get out on the floodplain, have the potential to backwater into this pond. Um, it's, it's unlikely this pond will ever fill from direct precipitation and runoff from the pipes to the point where it needs this emergency outflow.
There would only be if the Pullman ditch didn't work.
Yeah.
Or when Pullman ditch doesn't work. But, but the, the drainage, what I, I read and then I think I heard you say, or heard somebody say, as part of this design, uh, the project's designed to push water to the south to the existing agricultural property that's also owned by Vidovic. Is that correct? Versus pushing it into the Pullman ditch, which is to the north?
That's the orientation of that swale, yeah. It doesn't show up great on this view, but it, it's pointed toward the agricultural property to the south.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, and just to, we're not creating a, this retention pond is not, it is going to percolate water. It will drain over a few hours is the design that I think you heard. So this is not going to become a mosquito pit that, uh, San Mateo County Vector Control's going to have to come deal with every month or so, right?
If, if, um, if we go by the recommendations of the geologist, yes, their findings indicate that it will drain.
Based on science and engineering. Thanks.
Correct. And again, a, a flooding solution, it needs to be, needs to be implemented over a much larger, a reach scale. Cause anything they do on this parcel to address flooding is going to be rendered kind of useless by the, the bottlenecks, um, the other bottlenecks in the system. So by providing this thirty-foot easement, um, gosh, it, it gives a whole lot of room for, through this parcel to explore a lot of options to address the bigger issue that seems to be the, the real concern.
And, and based on your professional recommendation as somebody who studies this, is this, is the impact to the drainage that's happening at Pullman ditch going to be, um, a net neutral? A net positive for the community? So like it'll maybe mitigate some of the existing flooding that happens? Or will it be something that contributes to the flow into the Pullman ditch and makes it worse?
I think that, um, in terms of onsite drainage, it's an improvement. I think the provision of the easement is a huge move in the right direction. Um, I think that the conditions of the approval, providing some hydraulic modeling to ensure there's no adverse localized, um, impediments to flooding overflow, um, I think that's the, the one outstanding question, um, that will determine whether this is in the short term a benefit to, to flooding as opposed to just a, a break even. Um, but yeah, I think in the context of the bigger problem, having that, um, swath of land along the channel, outside of the channel, on this parcel available for future flooding improvements, um, is a, is a huge win for the community.
I have no further questions on this topic.
Can I ask a question? So some of the ditches in town have experienced what they call bank-to-bank width increase and significant width-to-width increase. So what's, how, how can we, how do we know that this whole buffer area isn't just going to collapse into the, collapse because of the water, because of the velocity of the water rushing through? Because, I mean, look at Seymour Ditch. Seymour Ditch, you know, thirty years ago, my neighbors used to walk across it on, on a two-by-four. And now we've had, you know, two bridges, um, bu- built and we just added, we had a ECDP work done this last winter to slow the velocity of water. Um, so nothing right now is, and maybe that's maybe a, a question we can ask is what's being done about the upstream water to prevent this ditch from widening bank-to-bank?
I think I can, I can touch on that a little bit. So there's, there's, uh, I mean, first and foremost, I would say Seymour Ditch is a little bit different. It's a much water, larger watershed, um, in itself. So it's, it's, it's hard to compare those two different, different watersheds. But, um, certainly those, those are, those are concerns that could be, could, could present themselves. We do have some constraints, um, some bottlenecks, as you will, the culverts that go under some of the homes. So that actually reduces the velocity of the flows, um, which, which has caused some of the flooding problems because the water can't get through fast enough. And so then you have some of that blockage and backup and then you have the, some of the flooding impacts that we've seen. And, um, with the, with respect to the easement area that's being proposed, on the long-term, on the long-term, there's, you know, there, there's three different angles really here. With, with respect to the, the upstream runoff and impacts, that's something that the city is, needs to continue working on with the, um, with the business to better, to better understand what's happening there and really mitigate some of that. There was some comments about, um, the discharges during, um, dry periods of time and, um, that, that's a separate issue. It's not impacting the flooding, although it does impact water quality potentially. So that's something that, um, from a code enforcement perspective, uh, city staff is going to start looking at taking samples and getting analysis on what's being discharged during those dry events. Um, creating a bypass is what we, we're looking at, um, doing long-term. Um, whether it's a culvert system or an open ditch within that thirty-foot easement area, that's really what, um, is going to help alleviate some of these issues. Um, because the, the existing configuration just does not, it, it doesn't meet the needs of, of this, of this water course, of this, um, of this watershed overall. And then lastly, at the tail end, I know that the State Parks has come to the Planning Commission in the past and they're working through some of those, um, uh, some of their concerns and issues, uh, because those culverts have been, have failed, as the community has pointed out, that is causing more backup because the water, um, in the past would, had two culverts that they would be able to discharge through. Those are not functioning properly and so that's creating another bottleneck where water gets back, backed up from that location. Um, when the city went out after this, after the last public, uh, planning commission hearing, the city, um, and with Waterways support, um, we went, uh, we went out and actually did some topographic surveys to get a better understanding of the topography of this land, looked at the watershed, uh, on a larger scale to really understand where the storm water is coming from, understanding that there's a lot of impervious surface upstream as well. So taking all that into account, um, you know, that, those are some of the things that we've done and, um, that data, um, which will be available for release shortly. I've, I've, we've been reviewing it internally and, um, it's, it's something that's getting ready to be released to the general public for, uh, for information, for, for additional information. But also to help the city move forward as far as finding that solution, um, is, is really looking at, um, you know, where, uh, how much, how much storm water is, is going to be coming through this just from the watershed that we have to ensure that State Park's culvert is sized appropriately. So those, these are things that we're working with State Parks on as well. So it, it is going to be a larger, um, approach as far as addressing this flooding concern for this neighborhood. Um, and, and that's something that we're going to continue working towards.
And, and I, you know, I, there is, um, the, I, the question of the Rossi report that was added into the staff report. So since it was added to the, um, agenda, I feel like we can talk about it. Um, I was not aware of the culvert at, um, on Naples that was like twenty-nine inches and that I guess is creating also a bottleneck. And there's also, uh, the, um, report noted that there was some scour going on around that. So how can the State Park work on sizing their culvert correctly when there's a, a culvert that is smaller upstream?
Because they're sizing, they're not sizing it based on the flow that's coming out of that culvert. They're basing their culvert size on what the, the amount of flows are for the base, for the overall stormwater basin. Um, understanding that it's not going to, um, you know, right now, it's not going to be able to support it, but by creating, utilizing some of the easement space that's being set aside by the twenty-eight-hundred Chomps project and creating that diversion, that's, that's appropriately sized to be able to handle the flows that we anticipate will be going through this watershed area. So yes, it, it's going to be sized for what is necessary for the future improvements, not what's existing currently.
Once the hydrology studies are done to determine what the flow actually is, because we don't really know what the flows are today, do we? I mean, I don't think so.
We, we have the numbers, we have the numbers now for the, for the, for the watershed overall. It's something, it's a, that was what the Public Works undertook over the last, um, nine, nine months or so. And so that, that document should be ready soon and, and we're happy to come back to the Planning Commission with some alternatives in the, at a future date to discuss. And I think that's, um, you know, I, I think the bigger, and I think more importantly is to have, um, that conversation with the community, um, that allowed us to come into those private properties to take those topographic, um, measurements that we, that were necessary. Because the long-term solution is to create this type of a bypass system so that, um, when we have those high-flow events, it's, the low, the, the lower, lower flows and the smaller storms don't have the same impact, um, from us, from respect, with respect to the flooding concerns. But with the larger rain events that we've seen, we know that it's undersized. And so that, basically creating kind of this, this bypass system for the higher flows is what we'll, what we're looking at achieving as far as reducing the amount of flooding impacts on the private properties adjacent.
So I want to be, um, I know this is, um, drainage in the area is a bigger problem. It's not an agenda item that we're specifically trying to cover, but a lot of concerns have been raised by the public and it's been a little, it's been a while since you said, hey, we're going to go off and we're going to do a study. You've done what you've, you've done the analytical work to understand what the size of the problem is and what the sources of the problem are. I've heard you say that you're going to release the data. I, again, I want to be careful about going too far here. Um, but yeah, I think we'd all, the people who are here would love to hear a public presentation on that before we get into peak rainy season, especially, um, it would be great, maybe we can take up this topic during Planning Commissioner comments and, and talk about some of these things. But I would love to see what we're doing short-term mitigation about enforcement and short-term mitigation for bypasses, things that we can do within Public Works control before we get to rainy season as part of our next report. But I, I think.
Okay. Um, so I would like to ask, uh, Matt, if you're still there? Um, so I'm, I'm having a, um, I'm trying to separate out the impervious surface of this planned house and the retention, detention basin that would take care of it. I understand that that's, that's sort of the, the line we're trying to draw here. It is hard for me though, because I was out there in twenty twenty. I've been at that spot where it's a river. It's not, it's not, you know, um, rainfall. It's a river and it's a river right there. And so, you know, that had, that has, I understand that that is a larger concern about the Pullman ditch itself. Um, but when that does happen, because that's not, that's not changing anytime soon, when that does happen, what's going to happen to that storm basin? Like, is that going to just, like, if, if you just imagined a river going right through that storm basin, would it destroy it? Would it, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to get an idea about, um, what it will look like realistically.
Gotcha. Are you still hearing me?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So that really gets to the, sort of the heart of the outstanding question, uh, which was related to the condition on the approval. And that's the hydraulic modeling of exactly what's going on with big floods in this immediate vicinity. So we now know how much water is coming at us from the watershed. Um, developing a detailed hydraulic model here where you have a, a restricted pipe on the opposites, you know, uh, just opposite the proposed residence that presumably overtops, the ditch overtops at that pipe and, and, and spreads out. The, the model will tell us where the water goes, how deep the water is, how fast the water's moving, whether the water would have the potential to damage a vegetated- water's moving, whether the water would have the potential to damage a vegetated earthen berm, whether the water would overtop that berm, whether the berm might restrict those flows in a way that would have adverse flooding conditions on neighbors. We, we don't have that information right now. From my understanding of the site, I think the water that gets out into that area is pretty slow-moving and pretty shallow even in the biggest of events because it has a lot of places to go. So my gut tells me that there's nothing proposed here that's going to make conditions worse, but representing the city, I, I want to know the exact answer to that question. So that's why we proposed a little more modeling there. So I guess the, the answer is, I don't know yet.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I can tell you, it came up to my knees, so that's, I mean, that's, and it wasn't really fast. So, I mean, I'm trying to picture the storm basin under that scenario and, and seeing a river periodically go over it and, and have the berm actually push water toward houses on, on the, what is that, the west side? No, the north side, the north side.
Well, what I can say is that if, if the berm has the potential to do that, or the modeling indicates the berm is going to do that, we could lower the basin, and, and I don't mean to speak for the applicant here, but just from an engineering perspective, it seems that we could lower the basin, eliminate the berm, the raised portion of the berm, and still provide more than adequate function. The downside to that is it's more soil off-haul.
I get you. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about the soil off-haul? You talked about 11 cubic yards. How many truckloads is that?
One.
One truckload? Thank you.
They haul 10 yards, typical dump truck.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like 1.1.
Well, that's all my questions. You have more questions? I do have one more question, sorry.
I, I have another question, too. Go ahead.
So this 4,700 square feet that is cited, does that include, that's the house, does that include the upstairs and the downstairs and the basement, or is it just impervious surface? That's, I, it seemed like it, that's, I think that's the whole house, right?
So the, the square footage of the house, it includes the second story, the first story, and garage. There is no basin, basement.
I meant the garage, yeah.
Yeah, there is no basement, so.
But the garage goes under the house?
No, the garage, here I can pull up the floor plans. The garage is, is off to the side and detached, and then there's a breezeway in between.
Oh, you took that out, okay. So there's just the first floor and the second floor, and that 4,700 square feet includes the first floor and the second floor and the parking space. It's not impervious surface, right?
Correct, that's the square footage.
Do we know the square footage of the impervious surface?
Yes, I'd be happy to pull that up, so.
Thank you.
I did some Google Map math, which I'm prone to do during these projects. So it, it appears by my non-professional engineering analysis that the project is in fact within 300 feet of the edge of the bluff tops. Is, is that an accurate assessment from the city's perspective? That's a clarifying question I have. I don't know if anybody's looked at it, but the edge of the property is mapped out in our project plan, appears to be within 300 feet of the edge of the bluff tops. Is that accurate, or has the city made a determination that it's further away? Or has the city not made a determination?
Maybe I'll start with Commissioner Gorn's answer. And the proposed site coverage is 3,864 square feet, and that includes the, the breezeways and the, the overhangs, so.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. It's, it's similar, okay, but not as much.
Do you want to open it?
Rick asked a question of staff.
Okay, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the question is, how far is the subject property from the bluff edge?
How far is the westernmost portion of the property from the bluff, bluff tops?
Let's see, you know, I believe, let's see, I can.
You have the GeoMaps in front of you, so you might take a second.
Scott, I'm measuring it. What I don't know is, is the bluffs at the edge of the, at the parking lot there? Would that be a good measurement at the end of the parking?
It might be right where the culvert is failing, because that's where the bluff top edge.
Okay, so I'm going to take it to the, let's say, the end of that parking lot, the end of the pavement, the pavement where it's a little bit of a cul-de-sac.
I think it's the ditch where the orange barriers are hanging out is where the culvert has failed, and so you have.
Well, it's, it's a little over maybe 760, almost 770 feet.
From the edge of the southern, the westernmost edge?
Well, you know, what I would do is, how about if I measure from the edge of the cul-de-sac? Would that be helpful? Or is that?
No, because it's.
It's basically the city has made a determination.
No, it's.
I don't think the city has made a determination.
While you're working on that, can I ask another question? And I know we asked this at the last meeting, you know, when we talk about the 30-foot easement, is the sewer line in that easement? Do you remember, Scott?
Yes, the sewer line is within the easement.
It's in that easement, okay. So Maz, when you were talking about bypass work, could that bypass work be done still with the sewer line in it?
Yes, even if, even if it's culverted, we, there's a 10-foot separation requirement, so it's still within that easement size area, yes.
And Scott, there was a question from Commissioner Joannus, that last question, number six. She wanted to know why the Rossi resident's report was added to our staff report, and if you could explain what elements of the Rossi report are relevant for the commission to consider in making its decision for approval or denial for the proposed project.
The measurement I have off of our ARC GIS system is about 475 feet from the bluff, from the bluff edge to the property.
Thank you.
And I'm coming up with roughly the same also. So approximately 500 square, 500 linear feet, so.
Thank you.
And then Chair Gossett, you had a question about the, the, the report provided by John Rossi from Forensic Engineering Consulting. And just, just so I'm clear on the question, the question is, why that was included in the staff report?
Yes, and also to explain what elements of the Rossi report are relevant for us to consider in making a decision tonight for this proposed project.
Yeah, so it's very customary, any, anytime we, you know, a community member asks for us to provide, you know, provide documentation to the commission before the staff report goes out, it's, we typically include it with the staff report. And, you know, we did go over it with Maz, our city engineer, and, you know, the, the items brought up in the report seem to, seem to have, were more related to the sort of a comprehensive, you know, concerns with the drainage in the surrounding area, not so much with the subject property. So, and Maz, maybe you have more to include on that.
I'll just echo that. You know, we, after reviewing the report, there wasn't much that it added to respect of this application for 2800 Shamps, but it was a, it was a document that does kind of, does highlight some of the issues with respect to 2804. And so yes, I think the question is, why is this was incorporated? It was because of the request of the, of the resident to incorporate this document into this report.
Thank you.
Do we want to move to discussion?
I, I do have one more question. I know Monterey cypress trees were recommended for the site, although there are noted trees in Half Moon Bay that have Monterey canker, so, and birds can spread that around. So are we still requiring that they plant these kind of trees, and do we know the health of the trees on the property?
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide some clarification, and, and, you know, I've, after working here for over 10 years, I've processed quite a few tree removal permits, and I've, one thing I've learned that it's, it's really the Monterey pines that are a real big issue right now with the, the pine pitch canker, and not so much the Monterey cypress. The cypress seem more hardy and resistant to the, you know, the canker. And additionally, you know, the, the landscape architect that's been selected for this job is very knowledgeable on, you know, trees along the coast, and I think I'd, you know, as staff, I'd feel very comfortable relying on his expertise as the landscape architect for selecting trees. There was also a, you know, and I believe it was attached to the staff report for last, or July 2023, there was an arborist report done documenting the health of, of all the trees on the site, so.
Okay, thank you. And the other question in relation to the trees, if they, when they mature, would they possibly take away coastal views from Highway 1?
So the, the trees that exist on site are, already provide screening that I don't think would be exacerbated by new trees, so.
I think we made a determination in one of our very early Planning Commission meetings on this, that there's no broad protected view of the ocean from Highway 1 for this project, and that there are projects immediately to the east that block the project, not completely, but, but obstruct it, and yeah. But also, Tom Conroy, who's a former Planning Commissioner, is one of the landscape architects with Kikuchi, so they have pretty good knowledge of the tree.
So, tree-related, are we taking out trees to put this basin in? Because the basin covers that whole area down below the house, and that, right, I mean, you can see that whole area down the house is all trees. Those are, are those cypress? I think those are all cypress, right? Sorry. But do trees come out to make that basin?
So, no, the, the, the trees can be preserved and still installing the basin. So the, the basin would go in in sort of this, this center area of the site, whereas the trees are located more along the, the sides. And, yeah, the, the basin can be designed to avoid any tree removals.
So are we done with questions, or no?
One more question about the soil. I just want to understand, so when they talked about the soil, they called it clayey, I think. So I, I just want to confirm that clayey-type soils don't, aren't known for absorbing water. Is that true or false?
Yeah, generally, clay, clay materials, they have limited capacity for absorption, and also at times can decrease infiltration.
Thank you.
I think that someone should be able to build on their private property as long as they meet the requirements of LCP and of this, what clearly is a drainage problem. I, I think that this basin is an attempt to do that and, and might work. I have a little bit of a hard time saying, yes, let's do that, but don't have a hydrology report, and don't have a soils report, and don't really have an idea about what happens to it when a flood, when a river basically floods it. We don't know. I assume it's clay, I'm, I'm, you know, like, like, I think it's, just from my, just from being there, the, the fact that it turned into a river means that there was not really a lot of absorption, and I know it's, I mean, I know it's clay. We all know it's clay. But there's no, there's kind of no proof, there's no reports, there's no, there, there isn't really a plan except to say, let's approve it, and then afterwards we'll do a hydrology report as a condition of approval. We'll do, you know, we'll check what the soil is as a condition of approval, but if we've already approved it, I just don't, I'm uncomfortable with that. So, that's what I think. I'm trying, I'm trying to see it. It's hard to see it out of the context of there's gonna, it's gonna flood. I mean, it's like, this area's never experienced flooding is just not true. And so there will be a flood, Pullman Ditch will fail, and like, what does it look like when it does that? It's a little hard to get past that, but I'm trying to see just this project. I'm trying to like parse it out, but, but I haven't really seen a lot of, like, the presentation hasn't been on the basin. The presentation's been on, you know, how hard it's been to, to do this and how long we've worked on it, and, you know, so I'm, I'm a little hesitant and open it up to discussion.
Well, may I provide a little feedback? So, big picture, I think the design of the house, just going to the architectural review component, has made a tremendous amount of progress. Knowing the kind of work that Kikuchi does from a landscaping perspective and the concerns they have, I'm confident that the landscaping plan will help mitigate the drainage issues and will be a benefit to the neighbors. I think that there's a lot of evidence to support that, that the landscaping plan will be a net improvement over what's happening there. The, and the, the fact that we've done a peer-reviewed study of the project of. The, and the, the fact that we've done a peer reviewed study of the project of, you know, we've looked at this with professional engineers and they're coming back to us with the recommendation of two things. One, it's either going to be no impact or a net positive impact to the neighbors from a water mitigation perspective. Look, I buy that. They're professional engineers. They're not here, and it's not just somebody who's on pay to, it's not just the applicant's engineer. It's somebody's gun. Yes, there are assumptions. Yes, there are things that we may not have a perfect view on. But I do think the second part of the recommendation is before we move forward with a project, there's a condition of approval that city staff have recommended at the peer reviewed engineers' recommendation, that we complete this analysis before the, the, the project itself is allowed to get its final approval to move forward. I think that that really mitigates it. And I think, I have confidence that the city engineer and the building department can manage that process adequately. Would love to hear an update on it when it's done, but I think that, and I think there's some things we might consider recommending as part of that so that it does address the concerns that the neighbors have raised. Right? I, I don't want to see a, I want to see a net positive impact with respect to what's coming out of Pullman. Right? Demonstrate it either neutral, completely neutral, or net positive. Right? And that's the assertion before the study's been completed, that that's where they think it's going to land. I'd like to see that happen. And if it doesn't happen, I'd like to, I don't want to see the project come back to me. I want to see, hey, give discretion to the applicant and city staff to come up with a plan that makes it a net positive. And I also think that honestly, if we want to just talk about fixing problems, getting a 30-foot easement that allows the city to actually implement a plan is a pretty big improvement. And that gives a city flexibility in our lifetime to get something done. So I do think that that's a benefit that the community will feel on this particular project. I buy that this is not going to be a mosquito pit. I buy that it's going to drain, it's designed to drain in a few hours. I'm like you, David, I think I'm a little skeptical that it's going to drain in a few hours just because there's so much water coming, but it's.
I mean, mostly, you know, you get my concern, right? I'm just, there's no data. So, and saying, so it's kind of like, it's sort of wishful thinking.
Can, can I just hop in?
So, I'm just, I'm just.
And when you're done?
But I guess you get my concern.
I, I get your concern. I, I think that it's not true that there's no data, but I, I hear your concern. I just want to finish my thoughts. I don't think this project is going to solve the housing crisis by itself. I do think that it's fair to say that this project has taken as long as it has because the original design was so far off the mark and had not considered things properly. So I'm not concerned that we've purposefully delayed this. We're trying to get to a design that works. And I think in this case, the public process seems to be working because we've come up with something that fits into the neighborhood much better than what the Hotel California, I think somebody called it before, was the original design, which is, it didn't really fit into the neighborhood. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think that, the evidence I've seen is that this is not going to contribute and that we have a plan to demonstrate affirmatively that this is not going to have a negative impact before we move forward as long as we attach the additional condition of approval. And we're also not in violation of, I think it's 755, the one that affects coastal erosion because it's too far from the bluff tops. So I think that that's been put to rest on this. I do think we need to make sure that the city is held harmless if the applicant's project does in fact flood and if there is in fact a tsunami. I think those are two conditions that I would want to make sure that we have. We've already got the tsunami condition that's been added, but if there is flooding from Pullman, I want to make sure that the city isn't at any risk of being sued. We need to be held harmless for an impact, you know. The owner's taking this on and they know about it upfront. Those are things I'd like to see.
I have little to add. I agree with both of you. The study that, it, it's my impression that the study that the peer expert recommended was the same study that Dr. Benjamin requested in 2020 and Commissioner Joannus asked in 2023. And here we are, you know, 2024, so four years ago. And I didn't even go back to the meetings from 2018 to see if it was requested then. But if Dr. Benjamin was there, it was probably requested then. And so here we, but I can't say that that happened in 2018, but if you look at the minutes from 2020, it was clearly requested that these hydrology studies be done, both subsurface and at the surface and during wet and dry seasons. And so that's why I, I just feel like there's, you know, something is missing here. And that's basically all I have to say. I think, I, I do like the idea of the easement to have a bypass solution. But anyway, that's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Do you think it would, if we added a hydrology, can we add a hydrology report as part of the condition of approval?
I, I think it is a condition of approval.
It's already in there, right?
Yeah.
It is.
Except that the, it's just, the commission has been asking for this for, for years. And, you know, here we are and we don't have that information and we're making a decision without adequate information. And is, is that how we want to operate here? We are planners and we're supposed to plan so that we, you know, protect the applicant but also protect the, the neighbors because, I mean, that's our job. And I, I just don't see how we're accomplishing that with, you know, missing information.
So.
I would like to add one other thing through the chair, which is that we actually don't know if we're far from the bluff tops. This 500 linear feet is a rough estimate. It's not a determination. We don't know where the bluffs, bluff tops start. We haven't like decide, you know, figured it out and the city made a determination that it's outside of that 300-foot barrier or whatever. We haven't had that. It's not, that's not real. That's like, okay, well, I'm looking at Google Maps and it kind of looks like, you know, 500 feet.
Well, it's, it's not me on Google Maps. City staff just, they just pulled up, I just, so maybe we should go back, maybe we should go back to city staff.
Where does the bluff top start?
And get clarification because I heard they pulled up the GIS map, which has demarcations of things clearly laid out.
We said where it started.
Right.
Like when, you know, when they're trying to look at the, at the maps and it's like, we're saying, well, it starts at the place where the, you know, the, where the coastal trail failed. But I don't know that. Is that where it starts?
Well, I mean, I think that's a question. Maybe we should take that back to city staff because I think that's, that's an answerable question. There should be a parcel map with a clear delineation on a GIS map and we should be able to see the boundary.
Should be able to see it. It should be a determination.
And, and I, maybe, maybe Commissioner or Chair Gossett, maybe we can direct that back to city staff to answer that question.
That's a fair question.
But it's just not, we can't do that tonight.
Sure, we can. We have the maps. It's, it's, it's a piece of information that sits in a piece of software that my former company wrote. It's, it's mapped. We just got to find the right map.
Well.
This should, this, maybe we take a recess. This should be like a five-minute exercise, 10-minute exercise. That'd be my understanding. Maybe city staff have a different, or maybe.
I guess it depends on where the bluff top starts.
I think this is a good question because it does affect the policy with respect to coastal erosion.
Yes, it does. Okay. Yeah, I just don't know. I don't, so anyway.
So, so let's set that aside for a second. And like I said, I know city staff are, I see people scurrying on that particular topic. We're, what we're doing is, as I understand it, is as planners, it's not our job to get into the execution and implementation, but we're providing direction as part of the recommendation that city staff has come to us that says, okay, we're going to have a binary choice here at the end of the project. It's a pass/fail. If it fails, you can mitigate. And then if it passes, okay, great. But if ultimately the study says this project fails, it will not proceed. So I don't feel it's not my job as a planner to manage the execution of this. We have a plan. We can delegate authority to city staff and then go execute that plan. And we can provide oversight on that. They can come back to us and say, hey, by the way, here's the CDP, here's the, what we did, here's the project. And then we can provide oversight on that project. But I don't think we need to do, it's, it's a, the, we can condition the project that it's a pass/fail. And I think that, that we're done. As long as this question of proximity to coastal, the policy with respect to proximity to the beach or the bluff tops is addressed tonight, I, I don't see any other issues with this project as is.
So.
Provided it passes the yes/no question.
Well, in a perfect world, like in a perfect world, the ditch would work and there wouldn't be flooding. And we could just say, oh, we have this much impervious surface and it's taken care of by the basin because in a perfect world, nothing floods. Right? So in a perfect world, we could just say, oh, condition of approval, if it passes, you know, with the hydrology report and the soils report comes out clean, then you can build. And if it doesn't, then you can't. But basically, when we say yes and we approve it, the pressure's off. Like it's, it's, it's not a, you know, we're, we'd be making a decision basically based on a future report. We'd be making a decision based on information that we don't have and that we've been asking for.
But it's a binary decision, right? I mean, it's a binary decision. We're giving direction as to what needs to happen. The hydrology report will be included as part of the condition of approval. If it comes back to us as a planning commission and it's, it passes.
Yeah, but what does that mean? Like, so.
It, it, it satisfies the criteria of not creating more harm, not contributing to the flooding of, I mean, we can, we can look at that language. It's in the staff report. We can talk about it.
Why don't we have it here? Why don't we have it here?
It's in the staff report.
It's not in the staff.
Well, somebody's got to pay for a hydrology report, right? And the applicant, this is part of the process is, I mean, I would assume the applicant's the one who's going to pay for it. You'd be nuts to pay for a hydrology report if you didn't know that, okay, if I, and, and maybe, maybe it's something we should have said, hey, before you come to us, there's no way we're going to do anything. But they're saying, hey, I'll pay for the hydrology report. We'll get the work done. It'll be reviewed by professional engineers on city staff. And if it meets the criteria laid out in the condition of approval, I don't need to see it again. There's no reason we need to see it again. Because it, it, from a planning perspective, it satisfies the policies, it satisfies the things that are on our LCP. And it, it also, more importantly, in the short term, gives the city an additional set of tools that allow them to better manage the water flow. It, when this project is completed, assuming it passes, you've got a landscaping plan that's going to mitigate the sheeting action that happens when it floods. You've got a detention basin that's going to not be a negative contributor and it's going to provide flexibility for future projects. I, I don't, I don't really need to see this again. And I, probably because I've seen it the most times of anybody here, I don't, I don't think we need to do any more planning on it. If we want to do a yes, I mean, the other thing though is I think we have to have three yeses. I'm just going to do procedural. My understanding is we have to have three yeses on this. So, like.
Is that accurate? I don't think that's accurate.
Yeah, I think it is because, maybe Winter can answer.
Okay, Winter, can you clarify that for us, please?
Yes, thank you. So we do approvals and denials of CDPs through resolution and there's a government code provision stating that for adoption of resolutions, you need a majority of votes of the total body, not a majority of those present. So you actually need three to approve or deny.
What happens if it's not, it's two to one either way?
Then it's denied, I think.
Well, then, actually, then you would have to continue until, and, you know, presumably at a future meeting, you would have more commissioners and could reconsider and take action. I will just add that in the staff report, I, I drafted that five-hearing rule section. I was not aware of the Architectural Advisory Committee meetings, which did happen after the law was passed. So if we add those in, I would encourage you, if at all possible, to take action at the meeting tonight, one way or the other. There is, of course, an opportunity for appeal to the city council.
So you're saying that architectural review meetings are meetings?
Yeah.
Yes.
Which means that we'd be four meetings in since the law was passed.
This would be the fifth, yeah. So tonight would be the fifth because we've had two planning commissions prior, two architectural advisory committee prior.
Since the law, okay.
Does the appeal count as a meeting?
It does, but there's not much we can do about that, so.
Okay. Well, because I, I mean, I know it's not related to tonight, but 555 Kelly, I think we had four hearings and I don't know how many architectural reviews, so we went over that five.
We did the math because those, there were several meetings that actually happened before the application was deemed complete. That's not the case here. So it's meetings after the application was deemed complete, which happened a long time ago for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have an update from?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'd be happy to provide an update on the linear distance. In the area of Pullman Water Course, there isn't actually a bluff edge, it's dunes. So in this case, it would be the beach. So the edge of the beach would be the, sort of the, you know, the endpoint. And we're definitely more than 300 feet from the, sort of the western edge of the subject property to the edge, the eastern edge of the beach is more than 300 feet. So, yeah.
I just did a print screen off of our ArcGIS, so Scott can share the distance measured between the property line and where it appears that the vegetation stops and the sand starts.
And, and I'll ask, I'll ask this question because I know it's coming from my other two colleagues here.
Yeah, that's not a bluff top.
The, the culvert, so the culvert is right where the letter C on Coastside Trail is, a little, little west of that.
Yeah, why don't you start at the C?
Where would you consider the bluff tops to end where the culvert has collapsed or where the beach is? Or is it that in this case, there's no clear delineation on where the bluff tops end?
So like, like I mentioned, this, this area includes dunes and not a, not a bluff per se. So in this case, it would be the, the beach edge. So.
And that's consistent with other projects that we've looked at or?
Yes, and consistent with the zoning code also. So, you know.
But that's, the bluff is eroded. So at the coastal trail, we have erosion of the bluff from the water. So I don't understand why we're, we're not looking at the bluff edge at the coastal trail.
Because it's, what, what's going on at the culvert is, you know, sort of the undersizing and erosion from the, the failed culvert and not necessarily, you know, the bluff edge.
So can I, so can I ask you, from, from the C in the Coastside Trail on this map to the property, how much is that?
You know, I would, I would estimate probably 225 feet, somewhere around there.
200.
Two, 200, so. Two 200, so.
Does the property line end at? If you look at 2805, does the property line, I think, does it? So does it go, does it go all the way to the edge?
It goes actually past the road there. If I'm not mistaken, I think it goes past to the edge of the road there.
So so the parcel doesn't end there. It ends here?
The other the other side of the road. The western side of the road, yeah.
Yeah, of Naples, so.
This is 2805?
Yeah.
Okay, that's actually helpful, so.
So it's 200 and something.
Here. That's 2805. So the edge, no, no. No, no, the edge, this is the property. Property ends right there. 2805.
Yeah. You're saying here?
Yeah. That's where it's, that's the 2805 property. This 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 isn't the property. This is the property. So that is the property.
Sure.
Correct.
It's close.
They they can have it if they have the GIS. So. It says that's where the property line is. So is the property line in there or there? Put it in there.
So, yeah, so I pulled up the site plan to show the the extent of the property.
So basically, we just we just don't really know because we don't know where the bluff top is. We don't.
Well, there's a definition, which is if it's dunes, it's not considered, okay, so Scott, help me understand. What I think I heard you say is if it's not like on Poplar, there's a bluff top. You have a clear delineation where it drops off and it's eroding, but that's a clear delineation. In other parts of, say, near Francis Beach, there's no clear bluff top. You immediately go into dunes. And so the measure you would use is not from the dunes. It's from where you, what you've mapped is the edge of the beach. Is that the correct way to?
Yes, that's correct. And then the the zoning code has a more specific definition of where, you know, the bluff exists and certain setback requirements depending on, you know, if it's a bluff edge, so.
So the question my fellow commissioners are asking is why isn't the culvert where it's broken on the coastal trail considered the start of the beach or the end of the bluff tops? Is that clear from your perspective?
Yeah, and I.
The bluff top, I was told it used to be flush. And now we have effectively an arroyo based on the water rushing through that has eroded away the bluff that used to be flush.
So it used to be that it was at the beach, but then the water has eroded and made a little canyon. And that is like, so isn't that part of the bluff top?
I'd be happy to provide some clarification. It's it is, you know, where the the failed culvert is is considered part of the water course and not the beach. And it's not the bluff top. It's surrounded by dunes. And I actually live pretty fairly close and, you know, go by there on, you know, on a weekly basis. And I've been watching the culvert fail over the years. And, you know, we're looking forward to bringing that back to the commission as soon as possible.
So city staff's position is that according to zoning, definition in zoning, regardless of what this was at some point in the past, today, if you draw a line from the edge of the property to what is the beach, because there are dunes here, so there's no clear delineation of bluff tops, it's in excess of 250 feet.
Yes, that's correct.
300, I think, is what 300 is what you want.
Yeah, okay. So so that means that one of the policies doesn't apply that was raised earlier. I accept that I accept that position. You may not. If you don't accept it, we can discuss the impact to this project. I mean, go ahead.
I really do hate making policy on the fly. And it feels like that's not a determination based on study or based on talking to someone who actually would know. But it's just like, okay, well, based on what what I, I mean, anyway.
You have a GIS map with a latitude and a longitude and clear property boundaries, and we have.
Right, where does it start?
I mean, well, that the planning staff have said, this is what the city code says. We can pull up the city code and we can look through it together. I mean, it's, at the end of the day, we my view on this is we should make a make a decision tonight. We should vote. And I would like to make a motion to so I buy that this is more than 300 feet from the beach and the policy regarding coastal erosion doesn't apply. I see the benefits of this project in the near term. And I think that if we attach a condition of approval that city staff have recommended, it creates a binary decision. If I understand this correctly, I want to get city staff to affirmatively tell me, like, if we attach the condition of approval that you've recommended, what happens if your study says, uh, this actually contributes? This makes the flooding in Pullman ditch worse. What happens?
We'd look at reconfiguring the the detention basin to either reduce it, go deeper. It would be that that was something that Mr. Waltz mentioned, that there could be additional offfall if we ended up going deeper and reducing the heights of the berms. So that could be one of the impacts with those modifications.
Could we pull up the condition of approval that you guys have recommended?
I'd also like to know what the chair thinks because I'm I'm really struggling here. You know, I want to approve a project that, you know, is someone's right to build a house. I get that. And they're good, they have gone to great lengths to try to mitigate the the problem, the drainage issue. But there seems to be these outstanding issues of no hydrology report, no soils report. Maybe it is actually within 300 feet of the bluff tops. Maybe it's not. We don't really know. So I, those are concerns. Those are big to me.
Matt seems to be raising his hand.
Go ahead and unmute. There you go.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I just wanted to make everyone aware that there is a full geotechnical report that was prepared for the property. So there is a lot of soils information. The soils information included with the percolation test was limited and referred to it as simply clayey soil, but that was a generalization. There were a number of borings done for the geotechnical report, and the soil was specified as silty clay with shells and sand, I believe. Anyway, there is a lot of information there if that's something you're interested in reviewing.
And where is that? Sorry, Matt, where is that?
I I'm not sure where it was provided to you, but it was provided to me.
Matt, Matt, that was it was in Attachment 3, and it's toward the back of Attachment 3.
Great.
Madam Chair, as requested by Commissioner Hernandez, I pulled up the condition of approval requiring the hydrological modeling.
I would recommend that we make this language a little stronger and say something like if the hydrological model shows the project will have any advert, will have adverse effect, just leave it as have adverse effects on adjacent property, permittee shall mitigate those adverse effects by working with planning and engineering staff prior to the issuance of building permits. So not shall work, shall mitigate. Provided the applicant has no issues with that.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable change. You know, Madam Chair, maybe you may want to just double check with the applicant to see if he's amicable to the change to the condition of approval, but.
Sure. Mr. Massara, did you hear what Commissioner Hernandez recommended?
Yes, Madam Chair, I heard. And we have no problem working with staff on that condition regarding that proposed language. I appreciate you asking me to address the commission because I think a lot of the questions that have come up over the last hour, the information is in the record and my correspondence, the details of all of those questions. I appreciate being able to answer if there are any other questions.
Thank you. So we have a geotechnical report that's been completed. We do not have a hydrology report, but we have a condition that will require a hydrology report. And the mitigation of any findings that this negatively contributes to flooding in Pullman Ditch before a building permit can be issued. So I'd like to make a resolution to approve the item before us to allow the construction of a new 41, 4,710 square foot, two-story residence on a 31,699 lot, 2,800 Chamseles Boulevard, however you pronounce that, for 48, 130, the lot 48, 13360, with the condition of approval recommended by city staff with the language that says shall mitigate adverse effects added to the condition of approval.
So just to be clear, we haven't heard from you yet. And I'm wondering what you think. Also, I looked at the the end of that that Attachment 3. There's a preliminary hydrology report back in 2010. She doesn't really say a lot. And the one thing that that Chairman Gossett raised, Chair Gossett raised is this percolation rate. And that is a 0.57. I know that that Matt said, take it with a grain of salt, but it is it's because it's only one bore. But it is 0.57. And they recommend one inch per hour for detention facility calculation. So I don't know what happens if there's more soil tests there and it's all 0.57. It means that water's not going out of there fast enough. I'm not really sure. So that's the only thing that I could see from from the the studies at the end.
Should we condition the approval so that the percolation rate is appropriately determined for the basin as part of the study?
Can we do that from a geological standpoint? I guess, you know, what happens if the water table is at, you know, a foot below the surface and, you know, the perk rate is, you know, 0.5 all the way around through the basin? Can you? How do you engineer that unless you just use overflow as a way to mitigate? I don't know.
You increase the size of your detention system to account for lower perk rates.
Is there enough land there to increase the size?
There there should be enough space and especially with the with the fact that the system's already sized larger than it needs to be for the onsite runoff.
It's sized, but it doesn't have the perk rate that of one inch per hour. We really don't know that. I mean, we have very limited data to go by.
And I mean, frankly, we also don't know about whether trees are going to get in the way of this retention pond because trees have roots. And I don't I I haven't seen a map of where the retention pond would be in relation to the trees and all of that either, so.
It's in the landscaping plan.
Is it on the landscaping plan? The retention pond is too? I didn't see that. I'll go back. Thanks.
It's not in the colored picture. It's in the 2D overlay.
You're seeing an Attachment 2?
Let me see. It's right here. It's C4. It's on C4 on the plans.
Thank you.
It's hard to see on your laptop. Here. Yeah, I mean, I think those are also, those aren't just existing trees. I think that's part of the new landscape.
Well, these are existing. What's on the bottom is existing.
Oh, these aren't existing?
So, let me just ask, since I'm not really getting a response up here, if we continue this until we get hydrology, or soil, or answer to the trees, or all this other stuff, the, the distance from the bluff top, all of that, what happens?
There's a risk that the applicant could bring a lawsuit to get a court to order you to make a decision.
So, what I'd like to do is recommend that we do two things. First, let's just take a vote, see where everybody sits. I don't want to just continue the item, though. So, I would prefer to give a yes or a no. I feel that after seven years, we've fairly exhausted this project. The detention basin can be moved so it doesn't damage the roots of the trees, which I think is the point that you're trying to make, is you don't want to put in the basin and knock out the root system, so maybe you move the basin a few feet, or maybe you make it a little longer. But maybe that's a condition of approval, is that you design the basin so as not to damage the existing trees. Maybe we add that as a condition, because that's how you can address it, rather than try to design it perfectly here. And, you know, I think the... Yeah, I, I don't, I don't really see, I mean, I, I think we should just approve, I mean, I think we should vote on this project. I know what my vote would be, and I think we can condition that, so I would like to amend my condition of approval to include that the drainage basin be sited and designed to minimize the impact to the existing trees onsite, and...
Can you add a condition of approval that says that the property line needs to be more than three hundred feet from the bluff top, and that needs to be a determination made by the city?
I mean, I think the city, it's not a bluff top. I think city staff have told us affirmatively that it's not considered a bluff top. So, I mean, we should hash, we should hash that point out right now, because I, maybe we can ask Winter this question, I don't think we're allowed to... We have to make the finding of whether or not we believe city staff or not, or if that's the correct interpretation of zoning. I don't think we can say, oh, come back and tell us later, we're the ones who have to make that decision, is, I think is my understanding.
But we can make it a condition of approval, that that is the case. Because if it's not the case, then we have a different conversation.
Well, we've been provided with evidence that says
Right, I understand.
It's more than three hundred feet from the beach, and that there, and city staff have made a determination that this, for this particular project, there are no bluff tops under the zoning code. So, we either believe that...
Yeah, but they didn't really determine that. They didn't determine it. They looked at, they, they, they made it up. It's not, it's not real.
Winner would like to provide some input.
Thank you, Chair Gossett. If you're going down the road of a condition like this, I would recommend that it maybe say something more like that the development not be considered bluff top development under the applicable laws, because it's actually a little bit complicated. There's a reference to Coastal Act implementing recommendations that get into definitions. There are a couple of moving pieces here, and I think that's what you're trying to get at, but rather than define with the three hundred feet, put a legal definition, definition or compliance requirement in there, might allow us to then come back, explain in detail what the requirements are, what the definitions are, and how the project either fits into that or doesn't.
That would work for me, thank you.
Yeah, so, so could you provide some guidance on what that would sound like?
So maybe condition issuance of the building permit on staff determination that the development is not bluff top development as defined in the LCP, the Coastal Act, and the, and the Coastal Act implementing regulations?
I'd like to amend my motion so, as laid out by Winter, so add a condition of issuance of the building permit, or the, I guess it's the CDP?
It would actually be the building permit because you're approving the CDP.
Condition issuance of a building permit that it's not considered bluff top under the LCP, the zoning law, and other applicable laws. Does that work?
And, I have a question. If we add the condition of approval for policy seven dash five five, and they, I, I noticed that they might need a major or minor amendment possibly to the CDP if they find that it impacts the height of the building. Would they have to come back, if it's a major amendment, they would have to come back to us? Does that impact that five meeting rule?
Um, that's a good question. It's a new law, there's no case law on it, so I would imagine that we could at least make the argument if they're coming back and asking for an amendment to their permit, we start the clock over.
From the very beginning? Because it's a new project? Okay.
So I have a motion, I don't have a second. Are city staff comfortable with what I've put forth as a motion? Okay, all right.
I have a clarifying question about the motion. Does it include the policy, complying with policy seven five five as Scott recommended earlier in the day?
So, that's B, condition of approval B6 for flood protection, so that, that is seven five five?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's what I intended to include in my, and so clearly, I am specifically saying we're adding condition of approval B6 as laid out in the staff, page two of the staff memo. I need a second. Maybe the motion's going to die. But before we do that, I'm going to pause and make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven o'clock.
I, I vote yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. I don't like this at all. I'll, I'll second.
Roll call? Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Goran?
I have to, I seconded, yes.
And Chair Gossett?
Abstain.
That means it doesn't pass, right?
Okay, I'd like to make a second motion.
Yeah, she needs to state a reason, please.
What's up?
Incomplete information that had been requested, definitely if you pull up the minutes from 2020, and that's why I had Scott, you know, provide the links, we don't need to put it up, but if you want, we could put it up. So it's very clear what was requested in 2020, and then it was again requested in 2023, and here we sit here for hours trying to make a decision on something that, where we just don't have enough information, and we don't know the impact to the applicant, which we should care about the applicant. They think they're designing something that is going to protect them and their property and deal with the onsite water issue, but we don't know that because we don't have all the data. And, and this commission has been requesting that, and I, I don't know how we can get the city staff to help the applicant, to bring the information forward, so we can make decisions based on fact and not some unknown engineering study that might be done. And, I mean, what happened to, you know, we see what has been going on in this neighborhood with projects that have been approved, you know, there's the risk of banks falling in and homes flooding, and I, I don't want to be part of decision-making with lack of information that has been requested. So, is, am I clear about why I'm abstaining? Okay.
And so, just, just so I can... If they do the hydrology report, which they have to do anyway, that's the information that you're asking for that's missing. That is the substantive thing that's missing from your perspective. Is there anything else that's missing that's substantive? Because there's been a geotechnical report.
Well, incomplete soils, too.
Soils, too, yeah.
But that's part of the geotechnical.
There was one bore done, there were two bores, but one bore done in a dry year to, and, and it showed that it, that it indicated that it wouldn't really drain that well. So, there needs to be a soil study to see if it'll drain. We don't know if it'll drain. We think it'll drain, maybe it'll drain, I don't know.
Okay, I'd like to make a recommendation that we deny the project. I, I don't, either we move, I strongly think we either need to do a yes or do a no. So, I reckon, at this point, if, if we're not going to move forward, if, if, I mean, nothing's going to change, if they do these studies, I mean, we can condition the project to say, make sure that you've done more than two borings, that, that is a condition that we can attach to it. The work will be completed. There's nothing more for us to do, because we have set in motion a plan that says you shall mitigate adverse impacts to the Pullman Ditch before you can get a building permit for this project, before you can get a, yeah, before you can get a building permit for the project. Full stop. It's mitigated. I don't, I don't need to read a geotechnical report, I need to know that we have done the work, we've set city staff to go do it, and they have a commitment that they're going to do their job, and give us an update that it's been completed to our satisfaction. That's what we need to do. I, I, there's a million things we can do as planners and planning commissioners and spend our time on. So, if you need the information, the information needs to be done as we've conditioned this report before it can move forward. So, the information will be there before it's completed. I mean, I don't know how much a hydrology report costs, I assume it's not cheap, and I think it's a reasonable thing to say, okay, we'll do it, it'll pass, we'll mitigate the issue before we proceed with the project. But, I don't think we need to punt to another meeting. I think we either need to say yes, we're going to approve it as condition, or we say no.
Okay, so we will say yes or no, but, and, and we know how you feel about it, but I would say that the, we have asked for the hydrology report multiple times. The planning commission has asked for it, and it hasn't, it's not here. So, it's hard to make a decision based on not having that information, and yeah, sure, it's expensive, but, but the whole point of like, okay, we said drainage is a problem, and so they have to come back with a plan. And their plan is, they have this, this basin that they've designed to mitigate the, to fix the drainage problem. That's great, but let's, like, but there's no study of it, there's no, there's no hydrology study to know that, that, that that works, there's no soil study to know that the basin will work. It's like, well, when we do those studies, then we'll alter the plan. And that's, that's not really planning, then other things happen.
It is planning. You, you lay out, you lay out rules about how the project can move forward, and you say, if this thing is true, then you move forward. If this thing is false, you cannot move forward, you shall not move forward. That is the language we put forth. And frankly, I would rather spend two or three planning commission meetings not on this project, but dealing with the bigger issue around Pullman Ditch that needs to be mitigated. And this is one tool that's going to help this neighbor, it's going to give this neighborhood a set of tools that we are saying this project cannot move forward until the mitigate, until it either is net zero or positive from a Pullman Ditch implementation, and from a, you know, eye test as a planner who's done stuff here for ten, a planning commissioner who's done stuff here for ten years, this seems like it's going to be a net improvement to the area. So, I don't think we need to, like, I would rather spend time getting to the heart of what my neighbors care about here, which is getting the flood mitigation dealt with. I'd rather have city staff make sure, one, tick the box, does this work, yes or no, mitigate it, fix it, and then move on and spend engineering resources fixing the Pullman Ditch issue. I'd rather have them go after whoever is violating the conditions of, you know, water that are coming from upstream, if it's Rocket Farms, if it's somebody else, the city should be going after them, and they should have a plan for it. They should have a plan for dealing with it. But we should be spending, as planners, we should be thinking about the big picture and getting city resources to focus on this. Make a decision, yes or no, is my recommendation. So if you want to say no, I'm fine with it.
I get that.
And let them appeal to the, the city council.
But so the, the big picture is that a lot of houses have been approved that maybe shouldn't have been approved. This is another one that actually goes above and beyond what the other ones did, I get that, to try to mitigate the drainage, but, but it, but it still is another one, and it's, and, and so it's, it's not so much that I approve or disapprove it, I, you know, it's like, they can build on their private property, and they did a good job doing the storm basin, but the city needs to demonstrate that it works, that it, that it is...
And, and that's a requirement of the project. The original sin here is when the Stoloski lot was originally subdivided, it should never have happened. There's a strong argument to me that that never should have happened way back when. There are reasons why that was wrong, that's, that's an argument, but the subdivision happened, it's been approved, the mitigated negative declaration has been done on this project.
I agree with all that.
It's not considered a wetland, it's, it's land that gets wet, but it's not considered a wetland.
I get all that.
Yeah.
That's all true.
So, unless Commissioner Gossett is having a, a change of heart, I'll make another motion.
So, also just to be clear, if we say no to this project, it's going to get appealed to city council, and they can decide what they want to do.
Correct.
So, it's not the end of the world, but...
And, and that's what Mr. Massara asked for last time, was either approve or deny.
Yeah.
You know, so...
I'm, I'm fine, just, but, but what I want to do is have a motion, like, like, take the exact same motion I just proposed, and like, that would be the project that I, I mean, this is the thing, is most likely, city council is just going to approve this, they're going to override, and there's an opportunity for the mitigations we've put in place to be ignored. So, as, and, and I do think it's our job to execute policy, to implement policy as it's laid out in our LCP, to interpret policy and determine, does this project conform, and are the conditions of approval we're making make the project conform? That is our responsibility as planning commissioners. We're not making stuff up. There's a eight-hundred-page document here that has all the policies. Our job is to interpret and apply. So, anyway, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. And Winter, I think you wanted to chime in.
Yes, thank you, Chair Gossett. So, if you're heading towards a motion to deny, we have prepared a denial resolution. It's a lot simpler than an approval resolution because there are no conditions, but we will want some findings as the basis for denial, which typically would be that you found the project was inconsistent with certain LCP provisions, or you didn't have... project was inconsistent with certain LCP provisions or you didn't have enough information to determine consistency, but if, as part of your deliberation, you might wanna talk about that so that we can record that in the, the resolution, if that's the way you're going.
What I heard was we didn't have enough information to make a determination about, I mean, I don't even know, I mean-
There are a couple policies in chapter seven, like seven dash 51, seven dash 57 that might, might be useful here. I don't know if you have those handy, but we could also read them out. Don't mean to take over if you guys have other ideas, but we were perusing.
I always appreciate the direction when you wanna step in. I'm pulling it up. Ensure that no new permitted development causes or contributes to flood hazards and we don't have enough information to make findings. That's seven 51. Seven 52? We don't have enough information in the staff report to clearly indicate that we're providing for new development in flood zones.
Sorry, so that was seven 51 and then-
Ah.
We had suggested seven 57, but I heard you say seven 52, so I was just trying to catch up.
Well, I think seven 52 is also, this isn't considered a flood zone in the city, in the city's mapping, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and it's not adjacent to a flood zone in the city's mapping?
I should let staff answer that.
Okay.
So, yeah, no, Winter's correct that it's, it's not adjacent to a mapped flood zone, so, yeah, and, you know, like you said, I, I think seven 57 would be, probably be, you know, an easier one to, you know, hone in on.
Because it's more concrete.
Well, and seven 51 would apply because it doesn't talk about a mapped flood zone, it just talks about flood hazards.
Mm-hmm. I, I think that, I would make a, a motion to deny based on seven 51 and seven 57.
That sounds good.
Okay. Winter, is that all we need to do, is make a, a motion to deny based on policy seven 51 and seven 57?
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing is there's insufficient information to determine that the development would not cause or contribute to flood hazards, that's seven 51 and seven 57 actually requires an evaluation, so the finding would be that the proposed project has not evaluated potential impacts to adjacent properties from its proposed structural flood protection matters.
I'd like to make that motion.
A second.
Commissioner Hernandez?
So I'm, a, a yes vote means I'm voting for-
Deny.
To deny. Yes, I'm voting to deny.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Motion approved to deny.
Okay, I guess that items-
Okay. All right, after that, we have the director's report and then planning commissioner communications.
Good evening, Chair Gossett, members of the commission, Steve McHarrison, term community development director. Last week, the city council did uphold an appeal request for a coastal development permit, the architectural review and setback variance related to the new residents and ADU at 595 Creekside Court. Second, I wanted to just give you a very brief update on the proposed Hyatt Place Hotel project. We spent quite a bit of time, finding time to schedule this hearing and that has landed as a special planning commission hearing on Wednesday, October 9th at 6:00 PM. The city does maintain a project website and it is under the city's community development department webpage under current planning projects for those of you and members of the public that would like to receive the latest information on that project. The staff report resolutions and conditions of approval will be made available to the planning commission and the public sooner than we normally do. We'll be looking at sometime between September 13th and 16th, so it'll be quite a bit of time, probably a few weeks before your hearing. Give you ample time and the public ample time to take a, a look at this project from the staff report standpoint and the conditions of approval. There's another, there's another thing too, is we expect those story polls to also be up by that week as well, probably maybe even a little sooner, so I know that's something of interest to the public as well as the commission. There's also a reason that we're doing this early is because there's quite a bit, as I mentioned earlier, scheduling between the commissioners and staff, including myself, there's some time off, there's some jury duties, all kinds of crazy things going on right during that time period. So we'd really ask, in return for us releasing this early to you, if you can get comments back to me by September 22nd, that Friday, and I'll do my best to get it to you by the 13th, but if not, the latest, like, looks like the 16th. Again, that will also be posted, as the packets go out, we'll post that to the website for the public to see as well. The third thing, I don't have too much to say on this, but there has been a request from two commissioners that aren't present tonight, so I'd actually like to push this out to the next meeting where they're both present, but that was on the county landfill site, some requests, and of course wasn't something I was around for, but I just wanted to mention, we haven't heard anything back from the county, we have been asking, I think we will, by the time I see you again on this topic. But I do wanna get, you know, their feedback, those two commissioners, and I'd actually like to talk to them a little bit more before, as I dove into it, I see there's a lot going on, there's some CDPs, there's some different history going on, as to make sure that I've got what they like correct for all of you. So that's, completes my director's report.
Can, can we ask you about the consultant that you might have hired for the, to study this, to create the objective standards for the Senate bill?
So yes, we did hire a firm, MIG Consultants, and we're just finishing up the contract portion of that, so that will kick off pretty quickly and you'll, you'll hear more from us and, yeah, you'll, you'll hear quite a bit in the coming weeks and months.
Okay, thank you.
As well as your involvement, thank you.
Do, do we have commissioner reports?
I, I have a, a request through the chair.
Sure, please.
With the objective criteria that we need to put in place, I'd like to request that we have a, an item added to the agenda between now and the end of the year where the planning commission can make a determination as to what constitutes a major transit hub for planning perspective and do this independent of any individual project, but just make a determination as to what, what is the standard that is used throughout the county. I've had conversations with Sam Tran's personnel that I'm not gonna discuss tonight, but I think it would be a fruitful conversation and for us as a planning commission to make a determination as to what constitutes a major transit hub for all planning purposes as we go into 2025.
Can we do that, Steve?
Yes, we can accommodate that and, and I really appreciate that that could be potentially through MIG as we're doing some of this SB 35 work, it seems like it's in alignment and what we can do is we'll put some information together for you, of course, we can just bring it to you and let's just figure out what to do. We will do some work ahead of time for you to review and see if there's some options. I don't have those answers now, but we would certainly have a lot more than we, we know today and sure that discussion has come up in the past and it's a good idea for us to-
And, and I would be open to forming a subcommittee to sit down with MIG and being on the subcommittee to sit down with them to help do some of the homework on that if, and that's not, I think we have to vote on that as an item, so maybe that's for the next, yeah.
Sure, and that sounds like a plan. Oh, you wanna sit on the committee or you?
Oh, we'll, we'll adjournize it.
All right, great, all right, great, okay.
So you guys can figure, we'll figure that out.
All right, yeah, I was thinking when the other commissioners were here too.
Sure.
If they want to, okay.
Okay.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Okay, so do we have a, a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Meeting adjourned.